And if we could all take our seats please, we would like to begin. Thank you. We would like to begin now by having our opening prayer, our national anthem and our oath of citizenship. And we would like to ask our trustee Christina to lead us.
Please join me in the sign of our faith and the name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we give those who trespass on us. And lead us not to temptation, but to love us as true people. Let us entrust to the Lord who hears our cries, our needs and the needs of all beings. The response is, "Lord, hear our prayer."
Lord, hear our prayer.
Oh God, we live in a country populated by the people of diverse cultures. May it lead us to understanding of peace, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
You are a God of mercy and understanding. Help us to live in harmony with our environment and all human kind, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
May we have compassion for the poor, outcast and marginalized, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
You look upon our suffering with compassion. Send your healing and comfort to those who are sick, we pray to the Lord. Praise Jesus, you were raised from the dead as you promised. Grant those who have died to share in new resurrection, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
Oh God, we believe that Jesus, your infinite world, lives with you and in us. Strengthen our faith, hope and love, that your reign will be proclaimed in our lives and the presence of your spirit be manifested in our thoughts, words and actions. We ask this through Jesus Christ and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
O Canada, our own native land, true nature of God, it offers us the land. With flowing hearts we see the earth, a true north strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we send our guard for thee. God, keep our hand, oh we are set free. O Canada, we send our guard for thee. O Canada, we send our guard for thee.
Good evening and welcome to our board meeting of Tuesday, March 20th, 2018. I would like to inform everyone here tonight that tonight's meeting is being video and audio recorded and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Before we begin this meeting, I would like to acknowledge that we have a number of delegates to be present here this evening and a number of guests in attendance. I expect all trustees, staff, presenters and guests in the gallery to maintain a level of decorum this evening. I would ask everyone to be respectful of one another and in particular of the delegates as they make their presentation. Outbursts or interruptions from the gallery and/or abusive or derogatory language will not be tolerated. Any group or individuals who are disruptive of our meeting proceedings this evening will be asked to leave. Now, I would like to ask that Vice Chair Ryan share with us the motions adopted in camera and information received.
There were no motions adopted in camera. The following information was received in camera. Carmen, Marie, Katrini and Lina Retard, June 30th, 2018. Critical consultant, Oyad, I think SM Pathways, Mark Lives, appointed as critical consultant, Oyad, Pathways, effective September 1st, 2018, for a period of two, three years. Consultant Carmen Condo, appointed as consultant, multiculturalism, community liaison and newcomer outreach, effective September 1st, 2018. This is a term, is a show, renewable and only subject to availability.
Thank you Vice Chair Ryan. And now we will look at the agenda. Do I have any additions to the agenda? Trustee Anko?
Yes Chair, I'd like to make one notice of motion.
Alright, let's just see what we have here. That would have to be 10.8.
10.8.
Thank you. Any other additions? No? Alright, can I have a mover please to approve each other? Trustee Quinn, second to five. Trustee Trice, all in favor? Thank you. Any declarations of conflict of interest? No? Okay, thank you. We have no presentations here this evening, but we do have a considerable number of delegations and we do thank our delegates for coming to speak. As our delegates are aware, presentations are not to exceed 10 minutes. I will ask Director Dawson to keep track of the time for us and delegates will get a one-minute notice before the end of your presentation. And we have to really stick to that timeline because as you know, we have a lot of delegations this evening. Trustees may ask questions for clarification purposes only. So trustees, we'll start with one question each and we will see where we go in terms of our timing. So if I could ask delegation 5.1, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofit resolution. Ms Bissonnet, if you'd like to come forward please. Thank you. And just begin when you're ready.
Good evening, distinguished board members, and delegates and guests. Thank you for granting me the privilege of addressing you tonight. My name is Maria Claire Bissonnet. I'm the head of the Camry Life Youth Coalition Branch and I represent Catholic pro-life students in the Halton Board and across the nation. Over the past year, I've met with many of your students at high school and youth group presentations and at such events as the March for Life and the Let Jesus Hire Rally. On behalf of those students, I would like to commend the board members of the Halton Catholic District School Board for passing a resolution that profoundly exhibits an unwavering Catholic conviction in its objective to defend the most innocent of our society. This resolution, upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits, displays a brave and principled stance for the truth in a society that more often than not wishes to remain ignorant of the most grievous trespasses against that truth. The concept of human rights is paradoxically invoked both to defend and oppose every one of the issues pertaining to the resolution. The issues of abortion, embryonic stem cell research, contraception, sterilization and euthanasia. The word "right" denotes a moral or legal entitlement, which is inalienable and fundamental. And the word "human" must include every human life, whether unborn or in old age, disabled or deemed to be enduring an unacceptable level of suffering, regardless of how inconvenient it may be to place an intrinsic value upon that life. The incorrect definition of one or both of these terms has resulted in a disordered understanding of the concept of human rights and a proliferation of well-meaning organizations that ostensibly exist to help those in need but do not in fact respect human life per se and often actively seek to destroy it. Mother Teresa, one of the greatest social activists and lovers of the poor and a recently declared saint in the Catholic Church, summed up our situation very well during a speech at the National Purf Breakfast in Washington in 1994, saying, "Many people are very, very concerned with the children of India, with the children of Africa, where quite a few die of hunger. Many people are also concerned about the violence in this great country, the United States. These concerns are very good, but often these same people are not concerned with the millions being killed by the deliberate decision of their own mothers. And this is the greatest destroyer of peace today: abortion, which brings people to such blindness." Indeed, our culture is blind to the devastation occasioned by abortion. Hundreds of innocent lives are brutally ended every day and the mothers, many of whom are pressured into this, often suffer silently from severe physical and mental side effects that are precipitated by abortion. Euthanasia also inflicts devastation upon our society. Disguised as a liberating right and mercy to choose the moment one's death, it quickly becomes an expectation and a pressure imposed upon those whose lives we assume are less really stated. Certainly Catholics pride themselves in raising funds to aid victims of natural disasters, economic crises, mass violence and government tyranny, as well as those suffering from sickness and disease. Our Catholic schools have done fabulous work, not only in raising money to help such victims, but also in creating a much-needed awareness of the needs of others and engendering students with a charitable mindset. The Catholics have the duty of love to the least of their neighbors, regardless of societal norms, and these include human beings which our government deems unworthy of human rights or unworthy of protection from inflicted death. We cannot in good conscience support the raising of funds for social causes which, under the guise of human rights, bring harm to these innocent lives. This is why I congratulate the board for its new pro-life motion that bans the collection of donations for charities and nonprofits that support abortion and other intellect practices. It is not new that the declared cause of human rights can carry with it a blatant and baffling contradiction that results in simultaneous efforts both to save and destroy human life in equal measure. Another recently declared saint, the great Pope John Paul II, spoke exactly of this in his encyclical Evangelium Vite, writing, "The process which once led to discovering the idea of human rights, rights inherited in every person and prior to any constitution and state legislation, is today marked by a surprising contradiction. Precisely in an age when the inviolable rights of the person are solemnly proclaimed and the value of life is publicly affirmed, the very right to life is being denied or trampled upon, especially at the more significant moments of existence: the moment of birth and the moment of death." John Paul II goes on to say that this contradiction is a direct threat, not only to the lives that are weak, needy, elderly or unborn, but to the very concept of human rights itself. And once this line has been crossed, this contradiction has become entrenched to the point where questioning it is no longer even considered permissible. It becomes practically unthinkable not to take the further step of promoting such practices as contraception, sterilization and embryonic stem cell research, practices that may not appear to attack human life as directly as abortion or euthanasia, but that are no less bound up in the culture of death. All these practices are ultimately part of the same philosophy and are thus inseparable. Where you find one of them, the others are lurking close behind. The path is then laid open for a return up to the eagles of eugenics, with the unborn and mentally or physically disabled as innocent victims and the attended by those in power to turn the human race into whatever they desire. The duty-bound response that we as Catholics have to make to this initial contradiction and its corollaries is clear. Not all the human rights organizations and charities are created equal. We must be discerning in identifying those which manifest this contradiction and those which are steadfast in truly upholding human rights. Failing to exercise such discernment is tantamount to supporting the destruction of innocent life and working to undermine the true concept of human rights. The Halton Board has courageously chosen to stand up for human rights with this resolution. In addition to saving potentially thousands of lives while simultaneously aiding victims of other equals, this motion is a positive and charitable way in which schools can live out their Catholic mission and evangelize to their students and the greater community. As a practicing Catholic myself, I am proud to see such a resolution passed and I encourage all other Catholic school boards to follow the same set, the example by the Halton Catholic District School Board. This should be the standard for every Catholic school board in Canada. We can all rest assured that following this motion, the poor, the oppressed and the sick will continue to receive the help they so desperately need, but that any and all funds raised by the Halton Board would go only to those organizations that actually respect all human life, from conception until natural death. Organizations that not only claim to defend human rights, but those that truly defend the intrinsic and fundamental rights of each and every human being. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Bissonnet. Trustee, do you have any questions for our speaker? Trustee Quinn? No?
Sure, there is. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Thank you very much, Ms Bissonnet. Can you clarify for me if you are currently as a student in high school and if so, in our board or in our board near a student?
I am not a student. Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much, Mrs Bissonnet. Our next delegates are 5.2, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofit resolution. Anne Cabral, Dee Herrera and Dee Sepido. Thank you gentlemen. Please begin whenever you're ready.
I would like to begin by wishing the trustees of the board, school board staff and all audience members a good evening. Tonight myself, Denzel Herro, Dylan Seguillo and Nicholas Cabral are appearing as an delegation of the John Vanney Catholic Secondary School in Hamilton. The purpose of our appearance at this meeting is to present the response from the student body with regards to motion number 1618, upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits. We will also be providing explanations as to why many students disagree with this motion. Profitable or nonprofit charitable organizations have been in close connection with our Catholic schools and our students. The engagement of students has taught us what it has meant to be steward of our Catholic schools. I'm here tonight to talk about the concern of my school community students with correlation to assign online petition and assign manual petition by the community students of the John Vanney Catholic Secondary School, both community life students from my school. Lots of them from my school created an online petition to survey the opinions and views from other people about this motion that was passed by the board in January, February of this year. In just 24 hours, signatures reached 2,000 and will rapidly over the course of one single year. As of today, the motion continues to grow with currently 21,429 signatures that disagree with this motion. As much as this online petition is signed by thousands of people from outside our school board region, it just comes out to show the concerns, opinions and views and suggestions that we, the school board, should take and reconsider revision with adjustments to mutual benefits. Another student was allowed to create and pass the school a manual petition and this was to showcase the specific amount of concerns of the students of my high school against this topic. As presented tonight, there are currently 819 signatures through rates 9 to 12 of the John Vanney School. This petition was to give a better and accurate representation of what is being discussed throughout my high school. The Terry Fox Foundation, We Are We, the Canadian Cancer Foundation, also known as We Live for Life, and many more organizations have engaged the students to believe that as habits, we must live in relationships with one another and as John Vanney always lived by, to accept to agree to serve the law.
But the overwhelming student included pushback has also come to attention that we believe that this motion heavily restricts youth engagement. By limiting charities that we are allowed to donate to, this prevents students from not only researching and choosing a charity and cause they believe in, but also prevents students from fundraising to causes that they want to enter that have affected them, whether they have been affected by a certain disease or family member has. Students across the board raised $1,000, for example, We Live for Life, because cancer has affected everybody in one way or shape or form. And now we're being told that we may not be able to do that because the Canadian Cancer Society may not be on the list of allowed charities to donate to. Students will be given a list of options and be told to choose one. This goes completely against what we're talking, which is if you believe in something and you want to do something about it, you should seek out a long research and find a charity, a cause or whatever that is that matters to us. It's really unfortunate that students will be limited and free to show support and choose charities that matters to them. These charities allow students in schools across the world to run outstanding events which foster community building while simultaneously providing students with an opportunity to get back at their own advantage.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Herro and I am proud to represent John Vanney alongside Dylan and Denzel. We've already heard about how this motion will directly impact HCPSE students as well as how our fellow students have responded to the motion's passing. To conclude our delegation's presentation, I will be speaking about exactly why we feel that limiting youth engagement in this way is contradictory to the message of Pope Francis to involve youth. To start, it is important to note that many charities that schools can no longer donate to are large organizations with the resources and capabilities to create real and meaningful improvements in the lives of many different people. Throughout our time at Catholic schools, these students have been repeatedly called on to become engaged citizens and to stand in solidarity with those in our community. There is no easier or more effective way to do this than to participate in charitable events for these many large organizations. One would surely find that for the vast majority of students under the Halton Catholic School Board, a fundraiser for one of the now banned charities was their first experience using their energy and resources to make a difference in someone's life. In his message delivered in preparation for World Youth Day 2018, Pope Francis said, "You young people have strength as you go through a phase of your lives where energy is not lacking. Make use of this strength and this energy to improve the world, beginning with realities closest to you." What he said is very true. As the student response to this motion has demonstrated, when students rally behind a cause, the results can be quite powerful. Many large charities such as the Canadian Cancer Society, the Salvation Army, UNISA and the Canadian Red Cross have the infrastructure in place to help students contribute to improving the world. For example, the Canadian Cancer Society is currently supporting 74 clinical trials in Hamilton and Mississauga, which in turn are providing state-of-the-art care for 853 patients. This is just one of many examples of a banned charity doing essential and lifesaving work in our local communities. Restricted donations to these charities will ultimately disenfranchise and limit students when time comes for them to fulfill the call of Pope and become engaged Catholic citizens. Further work, we believe it is important to once again draw from Pope Francis's preparatory address for World Youth Day 2016. In this address, the Pope explained the link between the Beatitudes and Matthew 25 and succinctly outlines how he calls upon the youth of today's world to act. He called upon young people to rediscover the corporal works of mercy, to feed the hungry, give drink to the thirsty, clothe the naked, welcome the stranger, assist the sick, visit the impurposed and bury the dead. Nowhere in this address, the Pope did differentiate between who is worthy of seeing the benefits of these works of mercy. Nowhere did he ask that youth think twice before donating to a reputable organization which creates real impacts in the world. Instead, Pope Francis asks that the youth of today's world indiscriminately give our energy and resources to improve in the conditions of those who are less fortunate. Instead of being limited in our charitable engagement by ambiguous and subjective conditions, the delegation from John Vanney asks our trustees to consider heeding the core message of Pope Francis's evangelist to the youth. Placing vague limitations on how students can become engaged citizens will do nothing to improve the common feeling of society and will only serve to set back the empowerment of our youth. This is why we have come before you today to request that you consider revisiting the aforementioned motion. We ask that you remove the rampant ambiguity and the specific word indirectly from the language used to define unacceptable charities. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate this support and all the time line. Thank you. Trustees, do you have any questions? Trustee Intamasi?
Hello, my own? Through you, Madam Chair. I just want to know, because the students spoke very well, first of all, thank you. But I would like to know, do we have a copy of all the petition signatures on it? I've read it several times in our prior correspondence and we alluded to it this evening and I'm just wondering, do we have a copy of the list and for a copy of the individual signatures?
Do we have a copy? Can we get a copy of the individuals who signed your petitions?
We have a copy of the Intamasi students from the John Vanney Catholic School. As of the 21,000 on the website, we have a copy.
Alright, so can we get a link to the website then and see that number? So the trustees can take a look at that. trustees can take a look at that? If that's possible? Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the delegates from John Vanney? All right, thank you very much, and we appreciate your time and all your work. Thank you. Delegation 5.3, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofit resolution, A.C., Canary Island.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to present support in the motion of upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits. I would like to present three main points. The first one is that it is okay saying no in order to say yes to better things. Just because you are saying no to some organizations and providing your advice does not mean you are excluding or judging. It just means you are saying yes to other better things. For example, to give an analogy here, if you choose not to eat at fast food restaurants, to not give them your business, it does not follow that you are judging people who go to fast food restaurants, or judging the restaurant itself. It doesn't mean you don't appreciate the perhaps few healthy food choices that they have, and it does not mean that you are looking to shut down these restaurants. It simply means you are making a better decision for yourself and according to your needs and principles. So you are still supporting the economy and businesses, just different ones, and you are acting and living according to the belief that eating certain foods is healthy. This motion and upholding the dignity of all human beings also makes a choice of choosing better according to Catholic principles and are still helping people while they are at it. There are a number of organizations doing beautiful, effective work that help give dignity to human beings, and there are many organizations that save lives without destroying other lives in the process. My second point is that human rights are for all human beings. We need to ask ourselves, do we believe in human rights? And if so, who gets those human rights? Certain charities in using some human beings as a means to an ends choose that some human beings shouldn't get human rights. If you have human parents, you are a human being. This is basic biology, and if you are a human being, you deserve the same rights as every other human being, regardless of the circumstances your parents are in, how you were conceived, and whether or not you were wanted. Our rights should be granted to us based on what we are, which is human beings, and not based on what we can or cannot do. A student was quoted in the CBC saying that one of the principal values that we've been taught in our schools is human dignity, but now the board is deciding which life means more. I want to say that this is a gross misunderstanding, because the board is simply deciding to act upon the principle that all lives are equal. The organizations that support abortions, euthanasia, and embryonic stem cell research are saying that some lives, the ones that are inconvenient, the ones that are not wanted, and the ones that no one seems to want to fight for, are disposable. These organizations are the ones who are deciding which lives mean more. A lot of students have presented their disagreement with this, but there are also students who want to uphold these human rights. Consider setting an example for those students of what it means to acknowledge that each and every human being, from their conception to their natural death, is deserving of dignity. For example, we would never say that a country that treats a certain group of humans well and gives them rights, but then excludes other groups of people are completely good. We would say that they need to work harder. We would acknowledge that they do good for certain citizens, but we cannot disregard the horrific things that they do to other groups of citizens for whatever reason. My last point is that abortion and embryonic stem cell research specifically are not just theoretical concepts. These are real injustices that harm human beings. When we talk about justice and we select justice for certain people only, this is just another name for social corruption. Abortion essentially discriminates against the youngest of our kind. Euthanasia discriminates against us based on the oldest of our kind. This is an age discrimination, and we should not stand for it. But we picture right now a human being named Beth. She is 12 years old, 12 weeks old, pardon me, in her first trimester. She is called a fetus, and she is currently the size of a lime with all her premature organs in place. She has bones, she has fingers, she has little movements, she has a beating heart, she has eyelids, and she has fingernails. Should we then help someone named abortionist destroy little Beth, to pry open Beth's mother's cervix with pointed metal rods, suck out her embryonic fluid, and then start drawing Beth out of that same tube piece by piece? Is it right for this doctor to break her soft bones as they get pulled out through this vacuum, which is 20 times more powerful than the vacuum of a household? Should not Beth's voice also be respected from the moment of her existence? Are we okay with all her organs getting ripped apart and having her skull crushed under the pull of an abortionist? Are we then okay with after the abortion, her body being used and abused for research, this research that is celebrated, but her given identity dumped in the biomedical waste that ended her body in our histories? 100,000 abortions happen every year in our country, a quarter of this generation and my generation, 300 children whose lives are considered not worth living, whose lives are considered disposable and not really there. How is killing ever a good thing? How is excluding the most vulnerable and the youngest of our kind and inclusively? Directly or indirectly supporting the killing of human beings is something that no human being, regardless of your religion, and if you believe in human rights, should be okay with. I am thankful for this opportunity, and please continue to support this motion that acknowledges that human rights are for all human beings. Please continue to support and uphold this motion. Thank you.
Trustees, do you have any questions for our delegate? Any questions? No? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Delegate number 5.4, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofit resolution, Lee Dickinson and Elle Keating.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for listening to this evening. I am here on behalf of Christy Dickinson, who filed this delegation. We would like to clearly express our frustration, sadness, and disappointment with not only the sanctity of life motion that just passed, but with the way that it was handled by the board and the lack of transparency during this process. Christy Dickinson is a parent of three children who attended St. Louis-Seton Catholic Elementary School and the co-chair of the school's council. She is also a business owner, the partners for charities and nonprofit organizations, most of which are affected by this motion. Laura Keating, that's myself, is a parent of a child that soon was at St. Louis Catholic School and a child at Corpus Christi Secondary School. We are delegating on behalf of our school community and several other parents and school council members from other school communities within the Halton Catholic District School Board who are appalled by this motion. According to the board policy on school fundraising last amended June 21, 2016, the definition of school fundraising is any activity permitted under this policy to raise money or other resources that is approved by the school principal and caused in consultation with and upon the advice of the Catholic School Council and/or a school fundraising organization operating in the name of the school and for which the school provides the administrative processes for collection. The community that we represent feels strongly that this motion should have been put forward to SEAC, the school councils, the school administrators, and the parent communities for consideration, being as the fundraising activities must be approved by the board. The lack of stakeholder input and lack of transparency on behalf of the board regarding this motion have left the community feeling like this was done because the trustees were aware that there would be significant pushback from the constituents that they represent. The way the motion was passed without consultation of stakeholders is in direct contradiction to the trustees' responsibilities, specifically to affirm a strong sense of pushing community and to recognize and defend the democratic and corporate authority of the board and ensure the affairs of the board are conducted with openness, justice, and compassion. Additionally, the board understands the importance, the board understands the importance of a positive public perception of our school board. It is important to share information with all partners while maintaining the confidentiality of the board and that is probably for your sake. This also flies in the face of one of the operating policies, policies for stakeholder consultation. Another quote from your website, "The Halton Catholic District School Board recognizes the corporate responsibility to set policy. Therefore, in keeping with its mission, vision, and governing values, the board affirms its duty to develop, amend, approve, and implement policies that are consistent with the gospel of Jesus. The development, amendment, and implementation of policies and its attendant administrative procedures must be part of a transparent process that engages key stakeholders within the Catholic education community. Following first reading of any new policy, the policy will be vetted for input through stakeholder groups typically for a period of three weeks. The timeframe for the consultation process may be adjusted as appropriate to the specific policy as determined by policy." So that's the end of the quote. Our school communities are filled with children and families that directly benefit from the charities and nonprofits that we support. Last summer, we lost Giacomo Corbino, superintendent of facilities to cancer. Now we are passing a motion that tells his family that we will no longer support the institutions that offered him care and support during the fates. How is a Christian and living with their faith to tell our families who have children with special needs or living with complex illness like cancer that we do not support the hospitals that keep them alive? The board is choosing to interpret one single message written by Pope Francis in 2014 to take a hard line that is short-sighted and not living the Catholic values of inclusion and teaching our children. Our question to the board is, where does this end? Will the board be getting involved with the hiring and firing of individuals, both on the board and the employees within the board, who do not live the traditional Catholic values, such as homosexuality and divorce, who feel it is hypocritical to use the Pope's words to further one agenda, anti-abortion and contraception, but not extend those to the individuals above? In the CBC article written by Desmond Brown due to March 3, 2018, board chair Diana Rendez looked at the saying that the tenets of faith must be strictly followed, and in passing the motion, trustees were simply following the tenets of Catholic faith for the latter. So this would also mean that board trustees and employees not living within the tenets of the Catholic faith should be immediately dismissed. If the board is going to follow the tenets of faith to allow this motion to pass, it would be hypocritical to allow those not living the tenets of faith in their daily lives to serve in the board and to teach our children. In closing, we feel strongly that this motion needs to be brought back to the board to be voted on again. Now that the communities that they represent have had the opportunity to review the motion and express their concern and disappointment, that the motion does not represent the best interests of our children, the best interests of our school, and the best interests of our community in large. As parents who actually give the funds that our children, that our students don't fundraise, we should have the right to identify and support the charities that help and advocate for our children in communities. Any other decision will result in parents not supporting school fundraising efforts, which adversely affects our children and education educators. The clear lack of support of the Halton Catholic District School Board community is evidenced by the more than 21,000 signatures as of March 16 on the online petition that was referred to the students who presented earlier. In the interest of time, I won't include the quotes, but they are in the delegation, several quotes of people who have signed this from outside of Canada. So the world is watching, and I urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
Our next speaker is number 5.5, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits resolution, Anne DeGian Tomassio. I tried, very good, thank you. When are you ready?
Thank you. Good evening, and peace be with you all, trustees, parents, and all who have made the effort to be present here at this moment of decision. My name is Melanie. I am a wife, a mother, a citizen of Oakville for almost 20 years. I am deeply invested in our Catholic system because all five of my children have been, currently are, and will be students within Halton's Catholic schools. I speak to you today as someone who, as part of the general public, directs her hard-earned tax dollars to our Catholic school system, and who takes her faith seriously enough as a parent to entrust her children to be formed and educated through a Christ-centered Catholic worldview. I also happen to love Christ and His Church passionately. I deeply cherish the gift of the Catholic faith and want to do everything that I can to save our precious inheritance, not only for my own children, but for each and every child who is within the care of our Catholic schools. I am an invested stakeholder who profoundly realizes just what is at stake if we do not hold fast to what it means to truly be Catholic. Since the sanctity of life motion was passed, there have been strong reactions and counterreactions from both sides of the issue, revealing a deep divide. This is an opportune moment to pause and consider the misunderstandings and confusion this has unveiled, largely due to the failure of many within our church to effectively transmit, communicate, or live the moral teachings of the Catholic Church. But it is also a great, a moment of great grace if we choose it to be, and it is my sincere hope that we can find ways to work together with God's help to bridge the gap and to come to know Christ and His Church more profoundly. Having been baptized and raised in the faith and attending Catholic schools myself, I used to wonder why we called our Catholic schools separate. I now know and value why we should not be afraid of that description. The Halton Catholic District School Board is a dynamic part of Ontario's separate school system, a system that should be privileged to differentiate itself by its Catholic foundations. We shouldn't shy away from the words separate or different, but rather embrace and celebrate what makes us set apart from the world. So, how do we dare to be different from the world, to be countercultural, as the Catholic Church has historically always been? We do this by grounding ourselves on what Christ modeled for us in the Gospels. His words and His deeds are His teachings. They are the cornerstone for every one of our Catholic Church's teachings, as difficult as some of them may be to accept. This will be hard, perhaps even shocking, for some of us to hear. The Kingdom of Christ is not a democracy. We cannot vote on or be consulted with before we decide which commandments to follow. If we choose to love and follow Christ and all that He teaches and demands, we must surrender ourselves completely to Him and the authority of the Church that He established. And we cannot make claims of unnecessary divisiveness when it is we who have chosen to divide ourselves from the heart of Christ. Jesus calls us to be in the world, but not of the world. We must choose to step outside of our comfort zones of fitting in with the culture around us. It's time we stop hiding behind the mediocrity of lukewarm adjectives to describe our Catholic schools as having Catholic values and being faith-based, and dare I say, publicly funded. It's time we all get serious about what we stand for, what we believe, and more importantly, whether we truly believe in Jesus Christ and all that He teaches through the authority of His Church or not. We either love Christ and His Church, or we do not. As tempting as it is to play it safe, someone once said, "You will never influence the world if you try to be like it." The life issues like abortion and doctor-assisted suicide and euthanasia are matters that are, by the world's standards, widely normalized and even enshrined as so-called human rights. But Christ was very clear that murder, the deliberate taking away of human life, is intrinsically wrong, and our church in her wisdom has never wavered on that moral instruction. Christ calls us as His believers to a higher standard, to always do better, to always demand better, and to look to His example as He challenged the status quo for 2,000 years ago. Christ's message is just as vital today as it was all those centuries ago. Those who are here to voice their concerns or make their delegation to appeal this motion, I commend the passion and zeal with which you plead. Your fervent desire to do good for others is what Christ demands all of us to do, so I thank you for answering the call to the mission of loving and serving others. I invite you to go one step further and rise to the challenge that Christ and rise to the challenge that Christ calls each of us to do, of raising the bar, of demanding better standards by which we help one another. We can positively influence the world around us while keeping the integrity of our Catholic moral teachings by holding charitable organizations to account for any of the ways by which they implement, endorse, or promote anti-life methodologies or practices. We should invite those organizations to rise to the challenge of protecting all human life at all times, from the invisible stages of conception to the inevitable stages of natural death. We must work as Christ worked, to save every person, no matter how small or vulnerable, to save every life from being used, abused, and extinguished. In the meantime, we should also seek out the assistance of trustworthy organizations who can help identify, endorse, and promote any charities, Catholic or otherwise, who have been vetted and 100% approved to be doing good work without violating any of our moral teachings, so that we are confident in knowing who to directly support with our fundraising efforts. Trustees, I implore you to truly work together to uphold the sanctity of life motion as it is a solid foundation by which we can implement the core mandate of our Catholic faith within every aspect of our school system. The heart of that core mandate is to imitate Christ by the way He lived, to love others as Christ loved through the authority He established in His beloved Church. Ensure that all the teachings of our Catholic faith permeate our schools with prudent and age-appropriate attention given to the education and awareness of the moral teachings surrounding abortion, contraception, sterilization, euthanasia, and embryonic stem cell research. Govern our schools so that they may serve to be an instrument illuminating all the moral teachings of our Catholic faith to our students, our teachers, and staff members, and our parent community. Seek ways by which our schools can partner with our clergy and parishes to help dispel any misunderstanding and confusion that seeks to destroy the unity amongst us as a family of faith. Upholding this motion will greatly strengthen the confidence of Catholic parents to be intentional in choosing to send their children to our schools because their education will truly be rooted in and integrated with a Christ-centered Catholic worldview. This motion will help our students to be challenged, to rise above the status quo, to be taught how to gauge their moral compass as they learn to swim against the undertow of a culture that worships selfishness, greed, and indulgence, all of which are at the core of each and every controversial life issue that plagues our society today. Our students and children will truly become the people that God intends them to be, to be a beacon of light in the present darkness of this wounded world, to bring true peace and hope, which can only be found in Christ our Lord. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, 5.6, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits resolution, R. Espinoza, D. Illusadio, and S. Reyes. And I apologize if I may be listening. Thank you. Please feel free to repeat when I'm ready.
Good evening. I would just like to firstly introduce myself and my students who are here. My name is Roberto Espinoza. I'm joined by Sarah Reyes and Danielle Lozada. We are from Saint Nishas of Loyola. Good evening, trustees, parents, and visitors. We are here today to express our views on the sanctity of life motion. As a Catholic community, upholding the values that we find to be the truth is what truly glows together. Different ways to ensure that these values are upheld can be found in various facets of our faith. One of the largest of these being charitable donations. The students of the Halton Catholic District School Board generate approximately $12 million annually for a plethora of charities that do amazing work within our communities on a local, national, and global scale. The motion that was ratified by the board of trustees who repeal the majority of donations to these charities shall not be overlooked, as many of these charities do a large amount of vital work needed to ensure the health of our classmates, our teachers, and our neighbors. As Pope Francis said, quote, "Giving something to someone in need is always right, and it should be done with respect and compassion." After reviewing the list of organizations that our schools will continue to support, we noticed that Sick Kids was not included. Many HCSB students and their loved ones use Sick Kids on a regular basis. For instance, Best Buddies is one of the charities that we will be continuing to support, but by stopping donations to Sick Kids, we are not truly supporting the people in Best Buddies, many of whom visit Sick Kids on a regular basis for help with their disabilities. Sick Kids Foundation is the largest charitable founder of child health research, learning, and care in Canada. Their vision, healthier children, a better world, believing that improving the health and well-being of children is one of the most powerful ways to better society. As an organization, Sick Kids provides specialized healthcare for children, develops awareness about many conditions, and fulfills the hospital's need to help the children. In addition, they raise funds for research to make new discoveries, treatments, cures, and enhance patient care overall. We would like to share with you all a comment that we have received through the online petition established by a group of HCSB students, which has amassed over 21,000 signatures in opposition of this motion. This comment is from Juliana L., and it reads, "Our immediate family has been affected by cancer for many years, and our daughter would not be alive if it weren't for Sick Kids. Our children have always been in schools under the HCSB. My daughter battled leukemia for seven years. She beat it three times, thanks to the wonderful people at Sick Kids and their research. My daughter is a miracle, and without donations to Sick Kids and the Cancer Society, she would not be alive. I was just recently diagnosed with stage four breast cancer and hope that research will come up with new procedures to prolong my life. I am appalled and saddened by this decision because Catholic values are to help those in need and to help your fellow neighbor and tap empathy. I am Catholic, and I don't understand how helping children, people, and the sick goes against Catholic values. I don't even know if someone ever thought that this is a good idea." This is just one of the many comments that we have received, and it really put into perspective how fragile life truly is and that we must do everything in our power as faithful Catholics to make sure that life is preserved and prolonged as long as humanly possible.
Another charity that we feel should have a place on the list of organizations that our schools will support is the Reach Out Center for Kids. Rock is one of the organizations which supports staff who support staff at our schools, encourage students to seek out for help outside of the school's need. They have been providing mental health services since 1974. Rock provides service for children, youth, and families who are struggling with mental health. And their mission is to, quote, "promote and achieve optimal mental health in kids and families," end quote. They offer initiatives like walking clinics, therapy general consultations, and 24-hour crisis response, just to name a few. Many students are affected by mental illness, and as a community, it is our responsibility to support them. Last but certainly not least, another organization which does significant work is UNICEF, an organization which is one of the largest advocates for children's rights. According to their mission statement, quote, "UNICEF programs focus on the most disadvantaged children, including those living in fragile contexts, those with disabilities, those who are affected by rapid organisation, and those who are affected by environmental deprivation," end quote. UNICEF helps the most poor and vulnerable people in our world, children. Moreover, they help children who are unable to help themselves, not merely by giving them things, but rather by teaching them how to help themselves. They do this through providing education, as well as clean drinking water, and transferring medical supplies to other nations worldwide. UNICEF helps a total of 190 countries and territories internationally. They work to make the world a safe and inclusive space by focusing on issues like gender equality, social inclusion, and the development of children. UNICEF realizes that there are critical stages during a person's life when they need the most care and support in order to be successful in the future. UNICEF has been doing incredible work in our global community since 1946, such as rescuing child soldiers and helping to protect children against HIV and AIDS. Each of these organizations helps people in need by providing food, safe drinking water, treatment, and shelters in mortar or water bowl who Jesus causes to help. Since the time we were young, we have been taught that we have all been made in the image and likeness of God. By denying the series of funds that we have been able to provide in the past, we are turning a blind eye to the image of God, and we're doing a disservice to Him by failing to aid people who need the most. These beliefs are further illustrated in our Catholic social teachings, such as the teaching of solidarity, which states that we, quote, "We are one human family, whatever national, racial, ethnic, economic, and ideological differences." However, this motion is stopping us from helping the people in need simply due to high ideologies of organizations. If we're intended to help people despite our ideological differences according to God, it is obvious that we need to help these people in spite of their personal stances on these issues.
Although these organizations receive donations from other places, our school board raises a substantial amount of money which can dramatically impact the quality of care which the patients at these organizations receive. We are proposing that we look for alternative solutions that allow us to maintain our Catholic values while helping the poor and vulnerable in our society. Despite the fact that some of these organizations may be indirectly involved with matters that are against our beliefs as Catholics, we can choose which causes we choose to support. Our support towards amazing work that these charities do should continue so long as we ensure that our donations go to the respective causes. Such compromises have already been proposed by Tanya Henry, Vice President of Relay for Life Ontario of the Canadian Cancer Society. In a letter from correspondent Matt Pfeiffer, Henry wrote, quote, "I would like to propose that we make arrangements to have the donations raised through Relay for Life events at HCSB schools to be designated for work that does not involve stem cell research." Relay for Life is a fundraising activity that many students as well as teachers enjoy, and by making this compromise, we are able to continue helping those in our community who are affected by cancer. We can not only attempt to find compromises, such as these with organizations which we currently support, but also be proactive in finding alternative solutions to this issue. For instance, as trustee Michael had suggested in a prior board meeting, we can attach a letter requesting that our donations only be used for certain work which our faith approves of. Another option could be tagging our donations so that they are directed towards specific causes. In conclusion, we believe that it would be a sensible decision to uphold the sanctity of life by repealing this motion. We ask the trustees to reconsider this motion because it fractionally narrows the amount of aid we can give to anyone who may be in need. This is evident through the significant reduction in the number of charities which we are able to support. Prior to this motion, our schools supported 100 charities, compared to the 30 which were approved following this motion. By repealing this motion, we are truly nurturing the call to love given to us by God, serving as people of faith and improving relationships within our school communities. Rescinding this motion promotes the very principles we are taught in our schools every day, enabling the Catholic social teachings for option for the poor and vulnerable and rights and responsibilities. As the students who generate the funds, we are interested in supporting charities that we believe are making a difference in the lives of the people they help, and ensuring that our money translates into meaningful actions that align with our Catholic values, separately from the ways we achieve this. Thank you all for your time.
Are the students following along? Any questions? No? Thank you very much. We appreciate your work. Thank you. And now we would like to ask, uh, 5.7, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits, E. Graham Lee, J. Joseph, and B. Savard. Please start when you're ready.
Shocked, saddened, and disappointed. These are just a few of the emotions that ran through my mind when I came to understand the Halton Catholic District School Board's motion titled "Upholding the Sanctity of Life." As a Catholic, I personally believe that we are called to serve all members of society, not just those who belong to specific socio-racial groups. I was taught by your teachers, the teachers of the Halton Catholic District School Board, this very lesson, a lesson that this board is failing to act upon. The preamble to this motion makes reference to a statement made by Pope Francis in 2014 at the Paris March for Life. Specifically, the statement, "Say yes to life and no to death." I submit that the Halton Catholic District School Board has misinterpreted this statement on such a level that our policies now contradict the very values that Pope Francis made reference to in his speech. I present you with the case of the Canadian Cancer Society. Over the past several years, the incredible efforts made by the students of the HCSB has provided them with the funds to conduct extensive research towards the goal of finding a cure for cancer, a disease that is currently protected to affect one in every two people. The money raised by our students has funded its very own research grant at the Jawinski Cancer Centre, allowing 853 patients to receive life-saving care, helped 678 people find answers to their cancer-related questions, provided 19 people with peer support, and helped over 8,600 people receive transportation necessary to get to life-saving cancer support through their Wheels of Hope program. However, when given all of these statistics, you, the board of trustees, have decided that the best solution is to cut funding to those organizations and a countless amount of others. I come from a Catholic family. I also come from a family that's been touched by cancer. This is a common narrative heard throughout our board, students whose families who have been affected by cancer and being prevented to support these organizations as a result of this motion that was passed by the HCSB. I now speak directly to you, the Halton Catholic District School Board, Board of Trustees. What good is going to come from cutting funding to these charities you planted indirectly support on Catholic values? We are called to love everyone unconditionally. As trustees, you should be focusing on the bigger issues at hand, not the nuances of them. I would like to leave this board with a solution that I believe will both satisfy the board and the students. The motion must be amended to exclude the word "indirectly." In excluding this word, the revised motion would continue to uphold Catholic values while simultaneously making contributions that we, the students, wish to support. My name is Ben Savard. I am a student, and I am a Catholic. I will not stand here and be told by this board that I am any less of a Catholic for helping sick children and cancer patients, nor will I allow the voices of over 20,000 individuals to go unheard. We, the youth, are the voices of tomorrow, and we, the students, will not let our voices go unheard. Thank you.
My name is Julia Joseph. You may recognize my name because I was the first student to bring this issue to the media via Twitter and the first student to have this statement regarding this motion published in the News on the Globe and Mail. But maybe to you, I'm still just another student with just another opinion. I first want to say how proud we should be of your students providing for the greater good, providing for the ability to donate to those in need while keeping human dignity in mind. The students needed no convincing to stand before you today. Little by little, match by match, the fire inside the students you have used this divisive motion to ignite has spread. Despite this motion's disgusting efforts to follow your consideration of Catholic values and the vague and detonating language used, you, the board, continues to wonder why. Why do the students care? Why are the students speaking out? Why are they doing this? And instead of listening and And instead of listening and reading to their responses of over 20,000 students, you continue to take their freedom from them and help from those who need it most. And maybe you're still wondering why. But so am I. Why don't you care about what the students have to say? Why didn't you ask us? Why are you doing this? If there's another hurricane and more people die, why won't you help? If my own father falls out of permission, why won't you help? If I have to endure a third heart surgery at sick kids' hospital, why won't you help? The fact that some of you have decided to pass this motion makes me believe that you've never been affected by cancer, that you've never been a sick child, one who was known by name from every doctor in the local hospital, one who got the fast pass to the front of line because they were an emergency, one who spent countless overnights in stiff hospital beds and the only thing they remember is a mask being placed over their mouth and waking up with an IV needle in their hand, looking into their parents' eyes that are filled with worry and doctors filled with relief that you're finally awake. It makes me believe that you have never lied still in a white gown, in a white room, separated by white curtains from others waiting for their surgery, that another sick child has ever said good luck to you as your bed is built into a long hallway, that you have never woken up in the middle of a surgery, sedated still, surrounded by strangers in scrub caps and blue gloves, confused and scared. And for that, you're lucky. Maybe you don't understand the severity of what you're doing. Maybe you don't understand that it is everyday students like me that are directly targeted by this motion. You, all the students, standing in front of you today, your position on the board, your paycheck, and the comfortable life you live, because without us trying to salvage what we can in the mess you have made, there would be nothing and no one for you to direct. The future of the Catholic Board and the support it has depends on the students begging, pleading, and looking you in the eyes right now. Although we have compromised our freedom, our integrity, and ultimately our faith, I still look to you, the board, with the utmost sincerity and the highest respect when I ask you to listen to us and to the true faith you have taught us through all 14 years of our HCSB career. Because I will not compromise my morals, the voice of the student, or the God that stands above me. Because I promise that if things do not change starting today, we will be happy tomorrow. Thank you.
My name is Emma Gormley, and I'm a grade nine student at Christ of King Secondary School. The resolution to no longer fundraise for nor support charities if they directly or indirectly support practices and ideals that are counter to Catholic values is a valid idea but misguided and divisive, and, I believe, not true to Jesus's call or His actions. One of the Halton Catholic District School Board's values, as stated on the board website, is, quote, "The importance of contributing to our communities and respecting diversity, celebrating multiculturalism, honoring individual rights, and embracing the social values of collective responsibility and the common good," end quote. This resolution is blatantly contradictory. Jesus said, "Love your neighbor as you love yourself, and give to everyone who asks of you." When someone is in need, it is our mission as members of the Catholic community to aid, care for, and love them. Who do you say that I am is one of the HCSB's previous theological themes. Who are we as Catholics to forego donations to the reputable charities that help millions each year? Who are we to deny ill child treatment because the facility or hospital does not follow traditional Catholic morals? Who are we to call ourselves servants of the Lord if we only help those who share the same beliefs as ourselves? In my math class alone, three of 22 students are past or current patients of sick kids' hospitals. Based on the current overly broad language of this resolution, sick kids is ineligible for charitable contributions for many of our schools. At my school, a student in the life skills class has eliminated exams each year with the funds raised donated to sick kids. Last year alone, Christ of King raised over $100,000 with the Canadian Cancer Society at Relay for Life. The numerous fundraisers that would be potentially managed under this resolution not only contribute to the positive atmosphere that is within our schools, but teach students the importance of providing aid to the great communities, both locally and globally. I find it disheartening that our board would obstruct our ability to support these extremely well-respected charities that we have had longstanding partnerships with. We must continue to be a voice for the unborn and speak to the sanctity of life, but not at the expense of all the good that these charities do for people around the world. The fundamental goal of these groups is to bring healing, support, and love to the ill, forgotten, and excluded. This was Jesus's message when He said, "For I was hungry, and you gave me something to eat; I was thirsty, and you gave me something to drink; I was a stranger, and you invited me in; I needed clothes, and you clothed me; I was sick, you looked after me; I was in prison, and you came to visit me." I stand before the Board of Trustees today with my fellow students urging for our voices to be heard, and their opinions may not be overlooked in these matters. Please invite us to your table so that we may open up a dialogue that allows both of these sides of this resolution to be carefully considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now at 5.8. Response to "Upholding the Sanctity of Life Through Donations to Charities and Nonprofits" Resolution. E. Jaszy Luch.
I just want to say that the students did a fabulous job, and my little speech will pale in comparison. Good job, guys. So, good evening. My name is Emily. I am a parent at St. Gabriel Elementary School. I am also the Chair of Parent Council. The Board states that "46 elementary schools, nine high schools, and three continuing education facilities answer God's call to love and serve, and strive to instill a lifelong commitment to the community." The vision is to nurture the call to love and serve our Catholic faith and aspire to be models of Christ through our actions of love, forgiveness, compassion, and acceptance. And to recognize that our success is reflective of the healthy and vibrant partnerships of staff, parents, pastors, and members of our broader community. We value the importance of contributing to our communities and respect diversity, celebrate multiculturalism, honor individual rights, and embrace the social values of collective responsibility and the common good. All this is stated on the Halton Catholic District School Board website. Jesus was a friend to sinners and nonbelievers. He was mocked by the Pharisees for befriending tax collectors. Jesus is also a friend to sinners like us. And we need to remember that as challenging as it is, we should never turn away others in a way that Jesus never would, merely because they don't believe what we believe or live like we live. Are we not the living face of Jesus Christ ministering to those in need? Does Jesus not teach tolerance and acceptance? Charity is not with which no man is lost and without which no man is saved, as said by Sir Roger Bellamy. Without remembering any of these things, then we as Christians, as Catholics, are at risk of truly becoming lost sheep. Thank you. I just have a few little sweet things to say. I was trying to keep it as positive as possible. So faith does not make things easy, it makes them possible. And be kind to one another, tender-hearted, forgiving each other, just as God also in Christ forgave you. And never will I leave you, never will I forsake you. Thank you very much.
We are now at 5.9. Response to "Upholding the Sanctity of Life Through Donations to Charities and Nonprofits" Resolution. J. Jaszy. Please begin when you're ready.
Dear Madam Chair, the Knights for Life Ontario is the umbrella organization for 55 educational pro-life groups and is operating throughout Ontario for 29 years. Our main goal is to see every single human life respected and legally protected from his or her biological beginnings until death. We present it at all levels of government on induced abortion, euthanasia, assisted suicide, reproductive technology, embryonic stem cell research, fetal experimentation, and more. I offer this for no other reason except by way of explanation that we serve the weakest of the weak and the most vulnerable within our society, those not yet born and by consequence their parents, most often the mothers. Most of us are Christian and an overwhelming number of Roman Catholics can see our works of charity in the area of pro-life as signs of our faith in action. We wish to present to the trustees this evening because we are empathetic to the situation you now find yourselves in regarding the "Upholding the Sanctity of Life Through Donations to Charities and Nonprofits" motion. We've also noted the great passion and courage of the student community to stand up and let their voice be heard regarding their fears about this motion. Yet we speak in favor of the motion and will keep our comments to three specific areas as well as offering our research services to assist the board in evaluating specific charities and nonprofits on the board's current list. Prior to this meeting, I did take some time to look at several of the organizations and then found areas which are in deep conflict with our Roman Catholic faith. There are direct conflicts in some, and there are indirect conflicts. Point one: The Gospel of Life is at the heart of Jesus's message. The Sanctity of Life motion upholds the board's duty to preach the Church's message with dauntless fidelity. We note the following for those who may not know the commitment demanded of each trustee under Halton Catholic District School Board's own policies. Under stakeholder consultation, the board affirms its duty to develop, amend, approve, and implement policies that are consistent with gospel values under Operating Policy Trustee Code of Conduct. The principles, whereas the aim of Catholic education is the development of each student toward personal fulfillment and responsible citizenship, motivated by the Spirit of the gospel and modeled on the example of Jesus Christ, a Catholic school trustee shall, within the duties prescribed in Acts and Regulations and reflecting the ministry within the Church, acknowledge that Catholic schools are an expression of the teaching mission of the Church, exemplify a personal lifestyle that reflects the teaching of the Church, affirm a strong sense of Christian Catholic community and Catholic faith community and culture, provide an example to the Catholic community that reflects the teaching of the Church, and recognize and vigorously defend the constitutional rights of Catholic education in the democratically corporate authority of the board. In a very real sense, you are called to what Pope John Paul said in the Gospel of Life, "It was a dauntless fidelity to preach the good news to every age and culture." Pope Benedict II's apostolic letter on the service of charity said, "The service of charity is also a constitutive element of the Church's mission and an indispensable expression of her very being." Pope Francis, in his letter as a loving mother, "The Church loves all her children like a loving mother, but cares for all and protects with a special affection those who are small and defenseless." This is the duty that Christ himself entrusted to the entire Christian community as a whole. And Pope Francis, in his proclamation of the gospel in today's world, "God save us from a worldly church with superficial spiritual and pastoral trappings. This stifling worldliness can only be healed by breathing in the pure air of the Holy Spirit, who frees us from self-centeredness cloaked in an outward religiosity bereft of God. Let us not allow ourselves to be robbed of the gospel." This board then not only holds itself to be a standard expression of the Roman Catholic faith, but this is also demanded of the board by the doctrine of the Church and also reflected in these letters and others written by the last three pontiffs. You find yourselves today in a difficult position since you are now aware that certain charities which the board has supported with fundraise have either directly or indirectly contributed our Roman Catholic beliefs. Second point: The Hallton Roman Catholic District School Board must reflect Roman Catholic doctrine of all times. We have read and listened to passionate student voices, a critical union, and a media regarding the Sanctity of Life motion, and none appear to understand the duty that is the board's alone to affirm its duty to develop, amend, approve, and implement policies that are consistent with the gospel of Jesus. We would agree again that given only occurs to look at the list of charities and nonprofits which have been provided very generous donations, that this motion must stand and challenges need to debate which will hold certain nonprofits and charities to a higher standard. Frankly, if a motion such as this had been in place at the outset, the students in this board might have better understood why it is necessary as a community faith to be vigilant. And thirdly, it's the board's duty and the duty of the students to gently but strongly challenge these charities. We might suggest the board agree to a grace period while it investigates and researches into the charities and nonprofits that may be found wanting, possibly with a full implementation of the motion for the 2018-19 school year. We know the students have concerns regarding associations they have grown up supporting and the relationships they've formed with them over the years. I have two sisters with breast cancer. In the last four months, I've lost two brothers and daughters from different cancers. My father died when I was 34 of liver cancer. So I can relate to the desire to raise funds for research and to support the people you know who have survived cancer or are battling it currently. However, we must remember it is our duty to uphold Roman Catholic values in every aspect of our life. I mentioned before that I admire the passion and courage of the students. However, their concern should be directed to those they wish to fund, not towards the board for doing its duty. We must have a consistent ethic of life. We cannot give money for one good thing a group does and ignore a bad thing it does someone else. And the students, this is a perfect opportunity for you to see the difficulties that upholding your faith in all things can bring. Your board needs your support, not your opposition, and your assistance in drawing up a plan for the future. Today in Canada, Christian doctors, pharmacists, and nurses are being bullied into taking part in abortion, euthanasia-assisted suicide, suicide, or dispensing oral contraceptives. In every instance, they are holding a high-waiving and standing strongly against these government forces. Churches and pro-life associations are being compelled to sign onto statements which they do not agree in order to give students a summer job. The Halton Catholic District School Board is now in the company of those being bullied and pressured to forego their beliefs and values. There are those who would destroy the Roman Catholic system in which you have been educated and made compassionate and courageous. And all around the world, Christians are giving their lives for the faith we profess. We must stand together in faith to address this challenge. The phrases "needlessly divisive" and "narrow view" have been used to discredit this motion. However, it is because the Church looks with a broad view that the current motion should stand. We cannot just look at the project we support and discount the rest, especially if another project offends and undermines our faith beliefs. The board has been told it's interfering with current practices, yet the board is mandated, as we've said. It affirms its duty to develop, amend, approve, and implement policies that are consistent with the gospel of Jesus. It is not consistent with the gospel of Jesus to provide money to an organization which offends His gospel values. Rather here, we have a great opportunity to challenge these organizations to stop the projects which offend our faith values and do more of the good if they want our donations. We encourage the board to stand firm on this motion and create a plan of action which prevents this situation from arising again, and urge you to consider this current time of trial a blessing. To the students, we encourage the students to address these issues with the organizations found wanting and charge them to a standard that reflects our shared Roman Catholic values, or they will lose your support. This would really be a marvelous way of being handled. This would really be a marvellous way of being ambassadors for Christ in 2018 and would encompass your wonderful passion and energy in challenging them to do better. This way, we stand together as church and we will bring about change. The true message of the gospel has always been divisive, and this is not necessarily a bad thing if it brings change that is good. Thank you.
Our next delegate is 5.10, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits resolution. Mrs Cantor. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak this evening. My name is Gillian Hector. My husband David and I are parents to five, three of whom attend St Mary's School in Oxford. I am grateful for the debate and subsequent approval by the trustees of the motion put forward by trustee Carabella that will support the Church's teaching on the sanctity of life through its charitable donations. Within my own family, we frequently received information coming home from school requesting donations for any number of charities, and I've often wondered why that particular organisation or who makes these decisions. So I was pleased to learn of this motion and its eventual passing to prioritise the values of our faith in our charitable giving. So I'm here tonight to speak in defence of the board's sanctity of life resolution and to urge the trustees to keep this groundbreaking commitment to uphold the teachings of the Catholic Church on the sanctity of life from conception to natural death. My words here this evening should not need to convince you, the trustees, of the importance of this resolution because it has already been passed. Rather, my presence here is to remind you that there is support for the resolution among the voices of protest. But I would also suggest that the opposition to the resolution indicates there is work to do in terms of educating ourselves, our students, our teachers, our community, on why we believe what we believe. Because I think we are here tonight based primarily on a misunderstanding and a missed opportunity for teaching who the Church is, what it stands for, and what our duty is as laypeople. So as we all understand it, the resolution being called into question states that the Houghton Catholic District School Board will not provide or facilitate any financial donations to any charities or nonprofits that publicly support either directly or indirectly abortion, contraception, sterilisation, euthanasia, or embryonic stem cell research. Essentially, this means that the Catholic School Board will stand behind Catholic teaching. This is great, this is a good thing. But where it gets tricky is in the examination of which charities get the stamp of Church approval. Now, there are without question hundreds if not thousands of good and worthy charities to donate are running to. When it comes to what we choose to support as individuals, unless we are philanthropic billionaires, there is no way we could possibly give to all organisations, charities, or ministries that appeal to us in our hearts. So how do we choose? Well, we have to ask ourselves some questions. Which charity is most aligned with our values? Do I want to give locally within my community or give support to international projects? Which cause means the most to me or has had a personal effect on me or someone in my family? The Houghton Catholic District School Board is doing just this. Based on the list of charities that have received the schools' donations in the past, the board is simply applying these questions for evaluation to determine how the money can have the greatest impact while also honouring the Church's teachings with regard to respect for life. Like everyone here, I rate the results of the board's study to determine which charitable organisations may continue to receive donations from our schools. Obviously, there is difficulty and heartbreak when a charity very close to us, friends or family, may be deemed now unacceptable for the school's charitable giving. Again, I emphasise that I don't know the results, that's the latest impression I had, I'm sorry, that's outdated. But the charities and the concepts I mention are for example. But if we say for example the Canadian Cancer Society will no longer receive donations for a school board, oh, who here hasn't been touched and summoned by cancer? And our natural inclination is to reach out, donate, support. But if the board finds that the cancer research is done with embryonic stem cells and not adult stem cells, then the Cancer Society would not be on the list of acceptable charities. Really and truly, this is a shame, and it should make us very angry, but not in the way that we first think. Our offence should not be that we are being told not to donate to that cause, but that there is a reason not to donate to that cause in the first place. We should be angry that life, in this case embryos, but life nonetheless, is being destroyed in the name of research. And our response, pulling away our donations, can be powerful. Money speaks. If a particular organisation sees a decrease in donations as a result of this resolution, they may ask why. And if the answer is because, again, for example, the use of embryonic stem cell research instead of adult stem cell research, perhaps their methods will change. Our public pressure can influence their work. And that's the part of education that's involved here. Rather than trying to change what's happening in here, let's change what's going on up there. Let's educate ourselves on the beauty and richness of the truth within the teachings of the Church. Let's open our eyes to the way our Catholic teachings are being dismissed or held in disregard. And let's learn how we can challenge and even influence the popular thought of today's society. In order to have an understanding of fundraising that students are capable of, a CBC News article dated March 1st stated that staff, students, and parents of one particular school raised more than $100,000 in support of the Canadian Cancer Society. This is remarkable and to be commended. But let's consider where the funds could go instead, because the money is not disappearing or being funneled into the pockets of the undeserving. Social justice, loving the neighbour, hospitality, these remain the concepts and teachings of the Church. Money will still be collected for charity, but for a charity whose work respects the truth and teaching of the Church. So let's say for example that our schools hold a fundraiser for St Martin's Manor, a residence programme based in Hamilton that offers accommodation, education, and support and care for young women in crisis pregnancies. This is one of the many charities seeking assistance from the diocese of Hamilton because of limited or decreased government funding. They require the donations to do the work. Imagine now what they could do with a donation from our schools of $100,000. Imagine their increased services and outreach. Imagine the effect on the community and the impact of our students seeing close hand and lives being changed. The reality is, in life, it is quite possible for something that is good to have a by-product that is bad. Charities are good. They are established to help people, to educate, to research, but for some of them, the by-product is bad. Their research uses embryonic stem cells, they support contraception and abortion as ways of aiding women, or they fight for a system that seeks the elderly and vulnerable at risk of termination of life. This strongly opposes Church teaching. It should offend us. In fact, it's not just offensive, it is destructive. The result in this case is the loss of life for the most elderly. But instead of being offended, we have managed to distance ourselves from the issue and convince ourselves that it's not really that bad, it's not really happening, or some aspects might be good, therefore we can accept the bad. That manner of thinking is exactly what the culture of death seeks to do. Infiltrate our thinking, influence our thought, darken our culture with destructive practices. We simply cannot sit passively and allow that to happen. I respect the research and knowledge of the students who started the petition and are fighting for something. But we are doing them a great disservice if we don't help their understandings of the teachings of the Catholic faith. Our guidance and example combined with their fervour is necessary. That is the future of the Church. So let's take these conversations and learn from them. Let's respectfully study what the teachings of the Church are, why one particular organisation is at odds of teaching, and what other charity or organisation or ministry does similar work but in line with Catholic values, teachings, and plot. We must provide students with the resources, the motivation, and the desire to learn about the richness of our faith and the beauty of its truth. For unfortunate reasons, probably having to do with their own lack of fight, commitment, or knowledge, society's expectation of the Church is that we should back off or stay out of it. Consider the March 1st Toronto Star headline, "Houghton Catholic School Board Bans Donations to Charities Not In Line with Church's Values." This seems to me something to be commended, that the board would uphold its values, yet people are enraged by it, offended, and once again calling for the Church to back off. I'm here tonight primarily for my kids, to teach them that the Catholic Church, its teachings and values, are always worth the effort, always worth the fight, that we cannot back off. Yes, perhaps this resolution will need more work, more effort. The board will need to carefully consider what charities will be approved. Students and teachers may need to revamp old ideas and come up with new fundraising activities for different charities. And as I've mentioned, we all have some learning to do. But upholding our Church and what it stands for, life, social justice, helping the neighbour, this is always worth it. I ask the trustees and all those here tonight to consider what has been presented in the delegations, the ones we have heard and the ones we look here, as well as the petition, and ask yourself if you have heard any argument that is so compelling, so convincing, that you would be willing to dismiss the teachings of the Catholic Church, particularly those on the sanctity of life. I urge you to keep this resolution as it is in place. I encourage you to use these conversations to educate and inform. I pray that we value life within a world where it is much too easily dismissed. Thank you.
Our 5.11, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits resolution, as Pusick. Thank you, please start when you're ready.
Trustee, can everyone hear me here? Good evening trustees and chairwomen of the board. Thank you for your hard work and thank you for inviting me to speak. My name is Sophia Kursi, my husband Jordan is fine in Berlin, appears to four wonderful children that attend St Mary's in Oxford. I'm here to show my support of the board's sanctity of life resolution and to encourage the trustees of the Houghton Catholic District School Board to continue with the motion. In light of this, I would like to elaborate three points. Why I am in support of this motion. First of all, the interest of the Catholic Church is to promote the common good. Second, the common good is promoted by upholding the dignity of life. And thirdly, promotion of the common good is subject to the principle of integrity. Point one, the interest of the Catholic Church is to promote the common good. First of all, I would like to remember that the story of our faith, our Catholic faith, is truly inspiring. In fact, there is no other faith that has caused more good for the human race in the last 2,000 years. The Church championed education for everyone, invented public healthcare, and has served the needs of people within the community. Our effort to work towards the common good continues every single day, and I quote Matthew Kelly, "The Catholic Church feeds houses and clothes, more people takes care of more sick people, visits more prisoners, and educates more people than any other institution on the face of the earth." End of quote. The global reach and impact of the Church is enormous on every aspect of our society. A detailed summary of this faith is outlined in the Catechism of the Catholic Church. In particular, the Catechism is a direct response to the Gospels taken from our sacred scriptures, the Bible, that assign value and dignity to each and every human life. Based on historical observation, upholding the value and dignity of human life has inspired the most positive impact in human history in terms of promoting the common good. Second point, the common good is to be promoted by upholding the dignity of every human life. Over the last 2,000 years, Catholic women and men have served the Church because they passionately believe in its teachings. The underlying spirit of Catholic values considers that, and I quote here Carvalta, commonly known as Pope John Paul II, "As an object, a man is somebody, and this sets him apart from every other entity in the visible world, which as an object is always something." End of quote. "As is somebody, a person should always be treated as a subject. This means that a person should never be treated as an object or as a means, an object to an end, however noble this end may be. It is with this proper understanding of personhood that we Catholics do not use human beings regardless of their age as objects, for pleasure, i.e. pornography, as research, in embryonic stem cell research, as human capital, including worker human rights. Or we as Catholics do not disregard of human beings when it becomes inconvenient to care for them, as unborn people aborting unwanted and unhealthy babies, or older people, living people, killing sick and elderly people. Promoting the dignity of human life is a 2,000-year-old uncompromising position of the Catholic faith. From a psychological perspective, I have not been able to identify any sound argument that would support employing a human being as an object to an end as serving the common good in the long run. And thirdly, the promotion of the common good is subject to the principle of integrity. Catholics have over the past 2,000 years given generously of their time, treasure, and talent to the end of promoting the dignity of human life. Catholics practise their faith with integrity. This integrity is translated in all the actions, such as charitable giving or shopping. In particular to shopping, an example of integrity of action is the Catholic School Board itself with the policy I31, "Aperal Purchases and Fair Labour Practices", dated June 2005, that evaluated how to source uniforms. In addition to quality, price, appropriateness of the uniform, etc., it also considered how the uniforms were made. In particular, the sourcing decision was also considered in the light of Catholic values, of human dignity, and the means of production. The final decision for the supplier was based on that the supplier accredits work of human rights and does not infringe on child labour rights. Real integrity includes doing things the right way. In the case of charitable giving, the same principle might be applied to the way we collect for and select our charities. This means we do not steal money from or manipulate people to support a good charity. By the same token, the charity that we select should not be an infringement of our Catholic values, which includes direct and indirect violations of human dignity. It would be absurd in terms of integrity to think that we as Catholics would contribute to a charity that on the one hand promotes a social good, like cancer research, but on the other hand, this same charity also is engaged in activity that uses human beings as objects, for pleasure, i.e. pornography, as research, i.e. embryonic stem cell research, as human capital, including all human rights violations, or whose mission would permit disregarding of human beings when they become inconvenient to care for them, the unborn people aborting unwanted and unhealthy babies, and/or living people killing sick and elderly persons. As a proponent of integrity, I strongly applaud the Houghton Catholics to award sanctity of life resolution through donations to charities and nonprofits. I would like to understand how it can be justified, under the Catholic brand, to support an organisation who on the one hand may be producing a great good, but can on the other hand be indirectly supporting and/or promoting grave offences against human dignity. On the principle of integrity, I believe that here we as Catholics need to continue to generously build and educate our society, as we have done over the last 2,000 years, by promoting activities and organisations that holistically uphold human dignity, and by the same token, not subjugating... and by the same token, not supporting activities and organizations that offend it. In other words, everyone should be coherent with their values. If someone wishes to make their own discretionary contributions, they're welcome to do so. However, if that person wishes to contribute in the name of a Catholic institution, then out of respect for what it stands for, its values should be held in consideration. In particular, with regards to applying the principle of integrity to charitable giving, a values-congruent Catholic institution only considers building the common good while at the same time upholding human dignity. So in conclusion, the Houghton Catholic School Board is called to good governance and leadership. I am under the impression that in terms of good governance, the role of the Catholic School Board goes beyond the narrow legal definition of mediating risks and general oversight of what I can understand to be in the case of hundreds and millions of dollars that are collected and spent. The role inspires a broader idea at the normative level in that the Board exists to identify who and what really counts and in a special, particular way to carry the torch of our great two-thousand-year-old Catholic legacy in promoting the values of our faith by upholding the dignity of human life towards building the common good for all the actions that fall within its jurisdiction. It is in this vein that I now laid a challenge of ensuring values congruence and integrity into the Board's able hands as it pertains to what values will serve as the criteria for donations to charities and nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Five point twelve, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits resolution. J. Lukey. Thank you, please begin when you're ready.
To the trustees, other Board representatives, teachers, parents, students, and other Houghton Catholic community members here today. Thank you for this opportunity to address me. My name is Josephine Lukey, and I am a fourth-year philosophy major at Saint Jerome's University at the University of Waterloo and an alumna of Saint Thomas Aquinas Catholic Secondary School in Oxford. I am the former president of both UW Students for Life and Aquinas for Life, respective pro-life clubs at each institution. As an aside, I was disappointed to find out that Saint Thomas Aquinas apparently no longer has an active pro-life club. I speak before you today to ask you to support the upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits resolution. I speak on behalf of many of the pro-life students, parents, teachers, and community members who are overjoyed with the passing of this resolution. Some of whom chose to refrain from joining the delegating as they were aware of the public nature of the situation, the media's bias, and electus position. Firstly, I want to assuage some of the concerns I read about the resolution. You can still help other people, you can still donate to charity. There are plenty of deserving charities and nonprofits doing good work which don't publicly support abortion, embryonic stem cell research, euthanasia, etc. And when given the choice between an organization that does good work and an organization that does good work and also helps to kill innocent human beings, should we pick the former? Even if you say no, you are free to fundraise for the charity of your choice on your own time outside of the Catholic School Board. Secondly, allow me to hopefully bring some clarity to this debate by making an analogy. What if the motion had been about refusing to provide financial donations to charities and nonprofits that directly or indirectly support infanticide? Would anyone be objective to the motion then? I certainly expect not. So the question then arises, what is the fundamental moral difference between infanticide and, let's say, abortion? And importantly, what is the fundamental moral difference between born and unborn? There are undeniably differences between the two. The unborn are smaller, less developed, and more dependent. But I would contend that those differences are not morally relevant because a newborn baby is also smaller, less developed, and more dependent than myself or my fellow students. One's size, level of development, and degree of dependency should have no bearing on one's value, nor should they influence whether a human being gets human rights or not. Look around, we are all different. We have different capabilities and are of different ages, genders, ethnicities, etc. Our appearances vary, as does our intelligence, and yet we are all of equal value and are equally deserving of human rights. Why? What is the basis for justification for this belief in our equality? What is held in common by all of us despite our differences? It is our humanness. We are all equally human, and thus all equally valuable and deserving of human rights. Any other metric you use to justify our value as persons, besides our shared humanity, is going to be discriminatory. You will have to draw an arbitrary line or else you see that value will vary from person to person and even throughout one's own lifetime. Note that our humanness is categorical and does not change over time. You're either human or you're not, and if you're a human being, you deserve human rights. The Catholic Church has long recognized this important truth, that we are valuable for who we are, not for what we can do. By virtue of being human, we are all children of God made in His image, and thus we all have human dignity, the young, the old, the able-bodied, and the disabled. So it is with this understanding that we can come to realize that both born and unborn certainly differ. They do not differ in morally relevant ways. Scientifically speaking, we know that life begins at fertilization, and thus the born and the unborn are equally human and equally deserving of human rights. What does this mean? It means we should treat the unborn with the same respect that we treat the born. A cancer research foundation supporting embryonic stem cell research condones the destruction of those embryos those stem cells are derived from. We would not condone the killing of newborn infants in pursuit of a cure for cancer. So we should likewise not condone or in any way contribute to the killing of embryos in pursuit of a cure for cancer. Because as I have established, though an embryo might be younger and less developed than an infant or an adult dying from cancer, they are all equally human and equally deserving of human rights. And you can't decide to help one group of human beings, cancer patients for instance, by killing off another group of human beings, embryos. Charities and nonprofits indirectly or directly supporting the killing of innocent human beings, whatever the noble aim, should not receive funding from the Houghton Catholic District School Board. Embryonic stem cell research is just one example, but the principle of the sanctity of life remains the same no matter the issue. As Catholics, we always must stand up for the most vulnerable, the unborn, the elderly, the disabled. When an individual is incapable of realizing their own dignity, of appreciating that their life is worth living, then it becomes our duty to help them see their dignity and that their lives do have meaning. Building a culture of life in which the right to life of each and every human being is protected is integral to realizing the kingdom of God. Love demands that we do not forsake a single individual. This resolution is not about deciding which life means more, as I have read in the coverage of this debate. It's quite the opposite in fact. It is about applying the idea that every human life is equal and that we should never seek to advance the good of one group of human beings by trading the very lives of another group of human beings. The principle of the sanctity of life is not something we Catholics should be ashamed of. It is beautiful, it is profound, it is at the very crux of our faith. As Malcolm Muggeridge, British journalist who conquered Catholicism, once said, "This life in us, however low it flickers or fiercely burns, is still divine flame which no man dare presume to put out, lest his motives never so commanded and lanket. To suppose otherwise is to countenance a deafish. Either life is always and in all circumstances sacred, or intrinsically of no account. It is inconceivable that it should be in some cases the one and in some the other." So in conclusion, I would like to once again ask you to support the sanctity of life resolution. I ask you to do what's right regardless of what's popular. I would be happy to answer any questions now or at the end of the meeting. Thank you very much for your attention.
Five point thirteen, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits resolution. M. Manigan, A. Salbakumarin. Okay, I'm getting better, these are yours on. Thank you, just begin when you're ready.
Good evening to all, my name is Margaret Manigan, and I'm a grade twelve student at Bishop Reading Catholic Secondary School. I would like to thank the trustees and members of the Board for taking the time to hear what we have to say tonight. On behalf of the students and parents of the Houghton Catholic District School Board community, I would like you to take into the account the amount of support that we continue to provide to the School Board that provides us with our education. In this case, we would like to address the issue pertaining to our financial contributions and where they are to go now. As members of the School Board, we make an incredible amount of financial contributions every single year, much of which goes towards the support of both local and global organizations that all work endlessly to improve the quality of life of others in every single way. Following the passing of this motion, concerns have been raised due to the fact that there was a lack of consultation of us who account for millions of dollars in financial donations through the schools and their school events. We do acknowledge and respect the support that this motion has received. However, many people at the School Board along with us believe that the passing of this motion does not adequately reflect on the views of the majority. We want to request simply for more transparency, perhaps for the motion to be revisited once more while being open to feedback of members from the School Board community, specifically the parents of the students of the schools. We appreciate that there was a vote among the trustees, but we believe that the motion would be better received if the entire community could have the opportunity to have their say in where their money is to go, whether by open discussion or by a vote. By restricting our involvement in something that greatly affects us and our financial contributions, we are left with a lack of clarity as to where our money will actually go and how it will be used. On behalf of much of the School community, I would like to emphasize again that we want the opportunity to decide where the money that we donate will go based on what we believe in. In order to get this fair opportunity, the most practical way to consider and support the beliefs of everyone would be to consult with those who are concerned about what their financial contributions will fund, which is apparently a majority of the School Board community. We want to keep the number of affected organizations to a minimum based on the consideration of the population of the community that wishes to have their voice heard in relation to this topic, just like we do and the group of students behind me. In conclusion, it is important that we have the voice of our community heard and considered when it comes to where our funds will go and how they are to be used. As a diverse School Board, our sole intention is to do good in both our local community and around the entire world. We do not want to be limited in the ways that we can do this. A very important value of the Houghton Catholic District School Board is respecting diversity, and we want our moral views to be supported by the HCVSB. This would be in the way in which we are able to direct or choose to direct our funds in order to do all the good that we can because we know that we can do a lot. Thank you.
Good evening to our fellow students, trustees, parents, and Board members present today. My name is Ashwene Salbakumarin, a grade twelve student leader also at Bishop Reading Catholic Secondary School. I would first like to tremendously thank the Board for giving all of us the opportunity to speak our mind, sharing our thoughts with all of you present at this meeting. In front of you today lies a remarkable group of students driven in our shared purpose to advocate for our message to the Board where we ask for a clarification and amendment to the motion passed exactly one month ago that bans fundraising for charities running counter to our Catholic values. In discussing this motion today with you all, I stand not as one student but for the majority, highlighting the perspective of the eager, passionate students in our student body, the forefront affected by this issue. With my words today, I wish to showcase a narrative that changes pertinent to our School community as a whole. When I first heard what this motion entailed and that it had passed, I was intrigued, consumed with wonder. I wondered what, I wondered why, I wondered how deeply would this impact the very causes that we as students stand so strongly for. In no longer providing or facilitating donations to organizations that directly or indirectly violate the sanctity of life, I understand we are simply following the tenants of the Catholic faith to the letter. We as a School community should simply be concerned over preserving our commitment to our shared Catholic morals, our social teachings, and rightfully, you are allowed so. However, let me propose a question. In the passing of this motion, were all aspects of our Catholic social teachings taken into account? As students, you push us to learn, you encourage us to reach beyond our own gate and aid those who are in true need. So let us approach the same concept by bringing up a few of these very teachings that act as a core component to our faith. Morality, what does it mean? We know it is defined by human choice, action, and freedom. True morality lies for the service of what is good and what is just. This is embodied in the auction for the poor and vulnerable. In a society marred by division, our faith instructs us to put the needs of the poor and vulnerable first. In doing this, we recognize that we must speak out in defense of the poor, never delaying giving to those in need. Simply put, it is our duty as citizens to seek the well-being of all. While we should keep the respect we hold for human life and dignity in mind, the passing of this motion prohibits us from continuing to give to other people who are helpless. In our pursuit for self-fulfillment, it is we who are capable of making the choice to aid those who are in need. The wording of this motion has restricted us from the actions we are called to perform, providing support to our community in times of distress. To promote true character, we must not only remain fixated on promoting human dignity, for while we must uphold the sanctity for human life, to work for justice and care for the poor and oppressed is a mulsified and true worship. Hand in hand with this comes solidarity. We are taught that we are one human family, whatever our national, racial, ethnic, economic, and ideological differences. We are one with our neighbors, our friends, who are our brothers and sisters. As our society evolves, there becomes an increasing need to address the growing number of people who are deprived of basic human rights. Thus, the principle of the common good immediately becomes to fight for justice, to aid our brothers and sisters in life. Yet we are unable to do so in terms of this motion. I wish to echo the sentiment that we must not ignore the needs of others in prioritizing and upholding human dignity, only one aspect of our social teachings. At the core of the virtue of solidarity is the pursuit of justice and peace. Undoubtedly, while we may disagree on why we should help, we sadly forget our main purpose, how we can help. As students, parents, a community, we are called to serve others in their time of need, fulfilling our responsibility as children of God. Now more than ever, we have to move from our devotion to independence through an understanding of interdependence to a commitment for human solidarity. While we appreciate the amount of effort and care the Board trustees have taken to implement our Catholic values, the passing of this motion does not accurately reflect the views of our community at large. Every day without fail, our student body shows immense passion in our strong love and commitment to aid. I continuously remain inspired in recognizing why we help. As abiding by our faith, we ensure that our spirit of kindness and generosity acts as renewal for those suffering, setting a profound rippling effect in the chain of helping one another. We are all interconnected in some form. We must be careful not to prioritize our value for human life and dignity over embracing everyone for whom they are, assisting each other in alleviating their burden. For when we do this, we only address the problem from a one-sided perspective. Instead of encouraging people to help, we are instructing them not to do so. I strongly urge the Board to reconsider amending or changing the wording of this motion in order to correctly reflect our values as a whole. We as representatives from our schools would very much appreciate this. I would once again like to thank the Board for giving us this opportunity. I would once again like to thank the board for giving us this opportunity to speak. And to conclude, I implore the board to consider how the wording of this motion has restricted us from achieving our shared social teachings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies and Bishop Redding, thank you. And now we have five point one four, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits resolution, J. Monti. Monti, welcome. Please begin.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Monti and I'm the chair of the St. Bernadette Catholic School Council. On November seventh, I spoke to the board at its regular meeting and voiced two recommendations that the St. Bernadette School Council and parent community firmly believe. And trustee Dango and superintendent Overholt have heard this twice, or have heard this also for the third time now. Catholic school councils should be consulted directly when policies and procedures are being reviewed, as councils are the official voice of the parent community. Catholic school councils have regularly scheduled meetings with trustees so that policy impact on school communities can be communicated effectively. At the November seventh board meeting, a notice of motion on upholding the sanctity of life through donations or the purchase of services was first introduced by trustee Helena Caravella. It's now March twentieth, and this motion, now a resolution, has been in discussion for four months and has never once been brought directly to the attention of the school councils in our school board. Likewise, neither parents, guardians, nor elementary students have been consulted, and I would add secondary students only by their student trustees. And so... Once again, we're sitting through a lengthy meeting, listening to delegations as our community attempts to make its voice heard. And once again, the voices heard are a function of who has caught wind of this motion, always belatedly. This is the key point, belatedly. The motion has been voted on and passed. I'm not sure what this board believes it is accomplishing by hearing its constituents' opinions after the fact. It seems like an absolute waste of everyone's time. This should have happened before. I've chosen not to express an opinion on the substance of the motion since it appears to be a moot point, but rather address the legitimacy, or more appropriately, the illegitimacy of this motion. As documented in correspondence attached to the February twentieth meeting minutes, the lack of consultation on the motion directly contradicts the Education Act, six twelve zero zero, section nineteen, which states, "Every board shall solicit the views of the school councils established by the board with respect to the following matters: policies and guidelines respecting the fundraising activities of school councils." To date, not one of our four trustees at large has solicited the views of the St. Bernadette School Council with regard to this motion. I like to believe that the lack of consultation was not by design, but rather unfortunate oversight. My personal opinion is that having trustees at large rather than my board contributes to a lack of accountability and may be one of the reasons for this oversight and consequent lack of consultation, but ultimately, that is subject matter for another future delegation. Had I not sifted through the three hundred or more pages of the full report that accompanies the meeting minutes, and it's not an easy task when I'm using my phone with numb fingers while sitting through my daughter's hockey practices, I would have continued to assume that the motion was dead in the water after the meeting on November twenty-first when it failed. If soliciting the views of school councils means that each school council is required to have a representative at every board meeting, then we should be told that directly. At the council of chairs held until February, this motion was not on the agenda, even though this meeting is intended for the leaders of our school councils. So then I ask, what does this solicitation of views of school councils as mandated by the Education Act mean to our trustees? A stakeholder survey at the bare minimum would have allowed the members of our school community to have a voice. Upholding the sanctity of life motion regarding charitable donations, which flow from school fundraising, was adopted by this board in direct violation of the Education Act. As such, it should be immediately rescinded and a new motion brought before the board which can be communicated to and discussed with feedback and views solicited from all school councils, meaning school communities, all our school communities, at a minimum before being subjected to a new vote. When a notice of motion is put forward that has a direct impact on the families in our community, consultation with all stakeholders should be the first action taken. After all, it is our money you're playing with. I applaud our student trustees for taking the initiative to consult with the student senators. You've shown us what proper consultation looks like. I ask that you solicit the viewpoint of your parents, guardians, and students. Follow the rules. Have a proper conversation with those you claim to represent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we have five point one five, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits resolution, Mrs. Pino.
A little nervous. Good evening, Ms. Dawson, members of the board, students, staff, parents, and members of the community. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Tanya Pino and I am a parent with two children. My eldest is in grade eleven at Corpus Christi Secondary School and my youngest is in grade eight at St. Elizabeth's, where I have volunteered on parent council for the past four years. Today, I intend to speak on the resolution of upholding the sanctity of life through donations and nonprofits and express my personal reason for opposing this motion. Around the world, students are standing up daily and challenging issues that some adults seem unwilling or unable to find common ground that will make this world a better place. A terrible burden really, but for them, for them, this is their reality and they would like a say in their future. On Tuesday, February the thirteenth, twenty eighteen, my daughter Olivia, student senator, took action. She spoke against the sanctity of life motion and spent the next few days with the help of her peers gathering over two hundred signatures at school to petition against this motion. I am here today to proudly support Olivia and her peers in that endeavor. Let me begin with a quote from a past director of education, Clifford G. Burns. He stated, "Catholic schools will always have the responsibility of supporting Catholic values in an ever-diversifying student population." That was taken from twenty-fifth anniversary perspective by Angela Blackburn. This statement still holds true to this very day. Here we are, all those years later, facing the same challenges. Let us first think about the diversification of the student population and its trajectory. I believe it is fair to say that the number of non-Catholics attending Catholic schools is on the rise. It may also be fair to say that many students may be influenced by parents or caregivers who are moderate thinkers. Moreover, we are a publicly funded institution and the motions that are tabled here must reflect this fact. Today, we are a very diverse community. Our Catholic community consists of individuals with varying differences, including race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientations, disability, family status, religion, linguistic differences, exceptionalities, socioeconomic factors, and many more. I have read the Halton Catholic District School Board's documents that highlight that the board's aim, quote, "is the development of each student towards personal fulfillment and responsible citizenship motivated by the spirit of the gospel and modeled on the example of Jesus Christ." We should all be motivated by the spirit of the gospel and we should all model our lives on the example of Jesus Christ. This sanctity of life motion as tabled directly contradicts the board's own mission statement, to be committed to serving staff, students, and families in its diverse Catholic community by incorporating the principles of equity and inclusive education into all aspects of its policies, programs, procedures, and practices. This motion issues a hard line stating that donations are a way of asserting our yes and our no for or against institutions which support or violate the upholding of the sanctity of life from conception to natural death. This motion seems to unfairly place the greatest importance and focus on the life of an unborn child. When we look at the specific language of upholding the sanctity of life from conception to natural death, we may underscore the word "to" natural death. Sanctity of life from conception to natural death suggests that we also need to value the sanctity of our whole lives. We need to remember that Jesus advocated for the living. In today's world, people of all ages are suffering. In our school community, some students, teachers, and staff are living in pain, both physical and mental. Some are living in poverty and fear. In addition, it is very important to note that many of these individuals have benefited either directly or indirectly from these organizations. For those who have been fortunate and have not needed the resources thus far, the likelihood that they will in the future is a very strong possibility. These organizations deserve our financial support. How can we not want to give to these organizations by being patrons of them? The answer lies in our own historic ability to do the right thing. Let us look only to current, existing, in-school programs such as the HPV vaccine, gay-straight-alliance clubs, to prove that there can be a balance between supporting the needs of each individual student and the tenants of the church. The key to balance these issues lies in our support, not advocacy. Once again, the sanctity of life motion applies that we are advocating against our Catholic values, which we are not. Students, teachers, and staff raising money for clean drinking water in Africa, better support structures to combat mental illness, or advancement for individuals with special needs or exceptionalities are the benevolent acts Jesus would be proud of. There is bravery in admitting that we have strayed off course here. We can be brave again. The board needs to look no further than its own policy that the Halton Catholic District School Board values relationships and partnerships and is committed to providing meaningful feedback mechanisms that encourage and support two-way communication. I ask the board to listen to this feedback, place personal agendas aside, and work for the common good. Our Catholic school system depends on it. Thank you.
Five point sixteen, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits resolution, Dee Swan.
Good evening, trustees, administrators, and secretary of the board. My name is Delik Swan and I am a grade ten student at Corpus Christi Catholic Secondary School. I am also an HCSB ambassador for the Federation of Canadian Secondary Students, also known as the ARASSO, this is a young discipline out of Canada, but I will not be speaking on behalf at this time. For the past two months, I have witnessed this motion, upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits, being broadcast throughout the media, throughout the radio, and as well as being transmitted verbally. I believe that it is important to express not only my opinion, but also the opinions of some students in my school community. And as such, while I have no doubt that the board trustees have had good intentions to uphold our Catholic faith with this motion, nonetheless, I am delegating specifically against this motion going forward. I do not think that this resolution will solve the problems that the board intends to resolve. In fact, I believe that this issue will simply lead to more disagreements and conflicts among not only the students, but perhaps some parents as well. First of all, I would like to say that I believe that this motion has somewhat been misguided and it does not consider all of the overall objectives that the board is trying to achieve. Our view on nonprofits has become binary and we have settled our viewpoints simply based on whether an organization supports or does not support the set criteria in the motion. As a result, despite the magnificent work that these charitable groups are doing today, we now have a tendency to deduce their merit based on what their beliefs may be. As well, at least to my knowledge, some of these charities, such as Metzans Sans Fontaire, also known as Doctors Without Borders, will not receive funding from our board, as it contradicts what the board values today. We have forgotten the fact that MSF continues to help those who are in need, be it that they are in crisis, war-torn situations, or even suffering from the aftermath of natural disasters. And personally, I can genuinely appreciate the work as they have helped provide emergency aid towards my home country. Approximately four years ago, Typhoon Hayan struck the Philippines and claimed the lives of more than six thousand people, especially in Etno Kan City located in eastern part of the country. And as a global community, we provided them with financial aid, but with the help of MSF, we set up an inflatable hospital in order to help those in need in medical attention urgent need. Even after two months later, there was still a need for emergency assistance, and the doctors affiliated with MSF continued to work tirelessly to ensure that the victims of this horrific disaster were taken care of. As being a part of this Catholic board, we must be conscientious of our decisions to dissolve board funding to the organizations, and we need to look at them with a broad and open view forward. And although I can accept dissolving funding for those who may encourage abortions directly, I find it entirely inappropriate that we are prejudging these organizations from a narrow perspective. Ultimately, we should be looking towards what the nonprofit does as a whole and base our values on that except cutting off funding based on the approval or disapproval of one value. Furthermore, I think that cutting off funding for those who demonstrate our Catholic themes as well as benefiting the community is ridiculous. I have noticed during March break that the board has released a public list outlining the resolution as well as the organizations that we described earlier. But while it does include some nonprofits in which many students know, such as MeWe and United Way, I also find numerous local and international charities that are not included, but in which have contributed greatly to our growth as a community. I am talking about Tansy Woods, Joseph Grant Hospital, Canadian Red Cross, Salvation Army, Sipits, UNICEF, and many more. Each of these organizations has demonstrated at least one thing that we in the HCSB recognize. For instance, the Salvation Army, which is not compliant with the resolution, displays themes linked to not only solidarity, but also the community and the common good. The organization or ministry is founded on the basis of three principal values: salvation, holiness, and intimacy with God. Their main purpose ultimately is to provide aid and support for those who may be less fortunate than we are, especially in our own community. They provide temporary shelter for the homeless as well as rehabilitation for people who have suffered the effects of addiction. It is definitely the generosity and of course, the faith in God that connect these people together to not only build relationships, but understand their reality as a whole. And I do not deny that we have people in the Halton region today who are struggling to keep a roof over their heads or struggling to find stability. It would be absolutely distasteful and disgraceful to those who continue to rely on the charity for financial or emergency aid. As stated in Pope's Magnificence Charity and Truth, Pope, besides charity for, besides the good of the individual, there is a good that is linked to living in a society, the common good. It is the good of all of us, made up of individuals, families, and intermediate groups who together constitute society. To desire the common good and strive towards it, it is a requirement of justice and charity, and Pope. We must not omit charities that continue to emphasize their Catholic themes and values especially, nor should we take away the benefits of having these organizations and receptors from the overall community. I think that although this motion indeed attempts to uphold our values by effectively sorting out the kinds of charities, I believe that this motion in itself is misguided and also quite wrong. What we are doing as a result is deducing whether a charity is a quote-unquote "good organization." What we are doing as a result is deducing whether a charity is a “good organization” and a “bad organization.” We effectively refuse to donate funds to those who genuinely need our help, when we send a message to those that benefit from nonprofits and which do not comply with this resolution. Yes, I am talking about students, or even some teachers, who have been in sick kids or Josephine Hospital due to certain diseases filled with cancer. We send a strong and almost alienating message towards them, saying that although we have the funds to support you financially, we choose not to. And that is not only degrading, but also deprives a student and/or teacher of their confidence in the Board. I have genuinely witnessed two friends and one teacher who’ve had cancer, and which in this case, the teacher had unfortunately passed away two years ago. I have no doubt that everyone in this room has experienced someone who has suffered from any sort of disease. While I believe that this motion is well-intentioned, I heard all the trustees who have voted in favor to reconsider their decision on this motion, or at the very least amend the motions that are only charities that directly support the set criterion are not funded. At the end of the day, we have already rectified profound connections with 100 charities and have celebrated the culture of these organizations in our schools. If we dare try to limit students from their ability to donate to humanitarian causes or any cause that supports our beliefs in any shape or form, then shame on us for taking that away of the students.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Vice Chairman, your recommendation? 10:00 PM. Second, please. Trustee Quinn, all in favor? Everyone? Excellent. Thank you very much. And now we are on number five, seventeen, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits resolution, Pete Swarzone.
My name is Peter Swarzone. I’m a Catholic school board great player and a Catholic school board supporter. In addition to other degrees in engineering and science, I hold an MA in Catholic dogmatic theology, and I expect to complete the requirements for a second full graduate degree in Catholic theology in the next six months. I’m here tonight to voice my support for the recent motion that bans donations to organizations that directly or indirectly support contraception, abortion, and embryonic stem cell research, which uses tissues, tissue from the borned fetus. Many of it stress a variety of opinions on the wisdom of the Board’s motion and decision. However, I am not here tonight to engage others in a fruitless and pointless debate of personal opinions. I came to draw the attention of the Catholic community to their solemn obligation to conform their will to the wisdom of the teaching magistrate of the Church. Lest anyone know that this is the foundation and veracity of my remarks tonight, let me point out that I have provided the relevant citations from the sacred scripture, from the catechism of the Catholic Church, from the Second Vatican Council’s document, Lumen Jevson, on the Dogmatic Constitution of the Church, from Pope Paul VI’s Concetrical Humene Vitae, on the regulation of birth, from St. Catheter of Siena’s Treaties on Obedience, and finally from St. Thomas Aquinas’ Hecate, his Summa Theologica. Let us begin by acknowledging that Christ calls all men to obedience through love. If you love me, you will keep life in hand. It belongs to the teaching magistrate of the Church and to him alone to interpret Christ’s wishes. The Church reiterates this call to obedience in the documents of the Second Vatican Council when it says that all Catholics, laity, religious, clergy alike, must submit with religious mind and will to the teaching magistrate of the Church with respect to faith and morals, as expressed by the Catholic bishops when they teach in union with the Holy Father, and especially to the rigor of Christ when he teaches both officially ex-Cathedral and unofficially about the Catholic faith and its moral ramifications. I would also draw your attention to Pope Paul VI’s reminder to all Catholics of the Church’s authority with respect to faith and morals in his Concetrical Humene Vitae, where he said, “It is in fact indisputable, as our predecessors have many times declared, that Jesus Christ, whom he communicated his divine power to Peter and the other apostles, and sent them to teach all nation his commandments, constituted them as the authentic guardians and interpreters of the whole moral law. Not only that is of the law of the gospel, but also of the natural law. For the natural law too declares the will of God, and its faithful observance is necessary for man’s eternal salvation.” This call to religious submission of mind and will leaves no room for cafeteria Catholicism, no room for cherry picking, or choosing what one likes or dislikes, no room for democratic expression of personal opinion when it comes to accepting church teaching on faith and morals. The Church is a divine monarchical institution, and all Catholics are bound by obedience and love to conform their will to Christ’s will, as promulgated by the teaching of his church. One cannot ignore the wisdom and clarity of St. Thomas Aquinas, who says that whosoever resists the authority of the Church encourages the note of heresy. That is, when one resists church teaching, one does so at one’s own peril. While these words may sound harsh, nevertheless, the call to obedience remains undeniable. It is also worth noting that many great saints, including St. Catheter of Siena, who by the way is a declared doctor of the Church, have said that the shortest route to perfection is through obedience to Christ and his church. Let us now turn to the evil of abortion and contraception, particularly odious evils, for the simple reason that they unorthically deny the love of God, that divine love, the miraculous who wills the child’s rational and immortal soul into existence other than nothing in the mother’s womb. God’s act of creation of the human soul holds special significance because the rational soul serves as the foundational and precedent of human life. Where contraception destroys the opportunity for life and creation of the soul, abortion and contraceptive abortifacients are especially callous in that they destroy the material elements of the infant’s body, leaving the unbaptized soul abandoned, forever denying the promise, hope, and opportunity to see God face to face, to experience the eternal fullness of the joy of God’s love. What had been a small flickering flame of light and life in the darkness of the woman’s womb is forever gone, extinguished through no fault of its own, but only by the evil external actions of another who sought its destruction. Abortion and contraception are then intrinsically evil, meaning that they are always evil in every circumstances, regardless of one’s intentions. It is Catholic teaching that no good intentions, no circumstances can transform an evil of this kind magnitude and severity into a good act. The Church also teaches that one can sin not only in thought, word, or deed, but also by being complicit in another’s sin. In our civil legal system of justice, this is called aiding and abetting, when the person who assists another in the commission of a crime is as guilty as the person who commits it. The man who drives the dirt from a robbery which ended in murder is as guilty of the murder as if he had committed the murder himself. Thus, an organization that is complicit, directly or indirectly, in an act of abortion or contraception is de facto culpable of that same great intrinsic evil. One must also consider another kind of sin, the sin of omission, where by one’s sats, one becomes a participant in an evil when one knew or ought to have known that an evil was being or about to be committed. If one knowingly contributes to an organization whose services are tainted by the fruit of the poisonous tree, then one must conclude that they too are gravely culpable, even though they seek to deflect their culpability through veiled ignorance. In fact, the Church teaches that feigned ignorance increases the gravity and severity of the sin if one ought to have known better. This Easter Sunday, all Catholics will be asked to renew their baptismal promises. Do you renounce Saint, do you honor all his works and all his empty promises? And when the Catholic lady responds, “I do,” they will be making a solemn promise to oppose evil in whatever form wherever they encounter it. Keeping all of this in mind, there is no moral rationale, moral rationale that one can call upon to justify supporting organizations that are directly or indirectly engaged in the evil or the fruits of abortion or contraception, for all of their good works have been contaminated and suspect by association. Nothing can be so complex or so time-deserving that one cannot choose where their donations are directed so as to avoid you, assuming of course that one truly desires union with and the love of God. Nor is there any good that an organization can offer that can compensate for the evils of this magnitude, gravity, and severity. Catholics have numerous other options at their disposal for often works of genuine charity, including organizations dedicated to pro-life, medical missions to third-world countries, or Mother Teresa’s missionaries to charity, care for the poorest that are poor. If the organizations in question truly desire our donation, then let them divest themselves of any association with the evil of abortion, contraception, or abortion. As Catholics, we need to demonstrate our commitment, our solidarity, and our fidelity to the love of God, to the love of our neighbor, and especially to the suffering and abandoned souls of the borned infants. Every Catholic should be asking themselves the following questions: How willing am I to obey the directives of Christchurch? How willing am I to form my conscience or conform to the moral teachings of the Church? And how much do I love Christ? Only when one can say that they are willing to obey the teaching magistrate of the Church without reservation, then one truly calls themselves authentic Catholics.
Trustee, you have any questions? Any questions? Thank you very much. Our next candidate is five point one eight, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits resolution, Estee Waddick. Estee Waddick? Thank you. Begin when you’re ready.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak for this motion tonight. As an overview of my presentation, I will explain who I am, why I’m here, what’s happened. I’ll list the concerns and the huge amount of confusion that I see within this motion. Who am I? I’m a parent of three children who spent the past 13 years within the Halton Board. My oldest child is now a junior at the University of Notre Dame, probably one of the most preeminent Catholic education institutions in the world. I have been the chair of the CTK Catholic School Council for the past five years, and I’ve also involved the Children’s Literature Program and the Rosary Hospital. I have a vested interest in educating children in the Catholic values. Why am I here? What started as a simple request by my son to help understand what happened to his relay for life, I ended up here making this presentation. I tried to understand what had happened, what had transpired, and I was incredibly disturbed. The process was flawed, there was no, there was confusion about the motivation and the impacts of this motion, and I thought something has to be said and done. So what happened? This motion was born on December 19th, 2017. We had the Christmas holidays, we all went away, and then on January 16th, the first meeting of the new year, after a very brief discussion, the motion was carried. It was only the student trustees who said, “Whoa, maybe we should get some other people’s input into this.” The next meeting, the motion to reconsider the motion was added to the agenda, and that was unanimously carried. It was at the February 20th meeting when we actually had a vibrant discussion about this motion. It lasted over an hour, there was input from all members of the Board, there were six votes, three trustees changed their positions, and despite all the confusion and uncertainty, the end of this very long meeting, it was carried. And that, I think, is why we are all here tonight. The next two slides will express my concerns about the process surrounding this motion. I’ve read a lot of policies and procedures regarding the Board’s activities. One of the first things that I was struck with is the requirement by the chair of the Board to have all available information to the trustees so they can make a sound decision. I don’t believe there was a basic understanding of this motion and its impacts to move it from an information item to an action item on the Board’s agenda. I am very grateful for the student trustees and their input to try and get other people’s consultation. Unfortunately, their votes don’t count. I was struck also when the trustee approved the motion to reconsider this, but then when it was actually on the agenda, she appealed that decision. Why would any trustee vote or try and stop a discussion of learning about more information about the motion? It doesn’t make any sense to me. It’s more concerns I have with the process. The first one I personally find most offensive as being part of the council I had CTK for five years. Current fundraising policy states that school councils must be consulted, and that’s been reiterated over and over by fellow presenters, but none of our presenters, nobody asked, nobody gave us any chance to provide any input. Another procedural concern I have is when the first motion to reconsider was brought to this Board, there was a discussion, yet when the second motion to reconsider it again, there was no discussion, no explanation asked for why we needed to reconsider it again. A trustee actually suggested that that might be related to some other motions and other things that were going on regarding executive compensation. I tried to understand that, I could not. But as a constituent of this Board, I think I’m entitled to understand how there could possibly be a connection between this motion and other motions that go before this Board. So those last two slides talk about the concerns I have with the process, which I would believe questions the legitimacy of the motion. The next two slides, I think, represent all the confusion, highlight the confusion and uncertainty surrounding this motion. Over three meetings, two trustees reversed their positions. The first flip-flop was accounted for a lack of comfort with the Word. There was no explanation for the second flip-flop. There was, there’s no answer to be given, how this can be reconciled with charities selected for the schools by their church, local church, or the diocese. This is more of a procedural thing, but during the discussion, the four trustees who support this motion from the beginning actually put a motion forward to postpone it. They admitted there was lack of evidence, and there was a lack of information, and so they thought, maybe we should just postpone it. That motion was defeated, and what happened a few minutes later? They supported it. They acknowledged they did not have enough information, yet they supported it and it went through. The trustee who originally moved this in December acknowledged that she did not know the impacts this motion would have on the charities- this motion would have on the charities and the schools that were within Halton. How is it possible that a trustee can imply her beliefs on all of Halton's schools without a mandate or even an understanding of the impacts? The last part is quite shocking to me. When I spoke to Father Callaghan or the Cross Church the Sunday following this, he was completely unaware of this motion and this change was going on. This board, in its call and in the motion explicitly interprets papal directive. I cannot believe that that church should not have been consulted before you imply that you can direct, you can choose the papal directives that you want to impose. There's still more questions with no answers. When I first heard about this motion, I thought, "This is against everything I've been taught in my Catholic education many years, in that I am to do as Jesus does." I believe it contradicts basic tenets of Catholic faith. But I am not a theologian. I don't believe anybody on the board is a theologian. And I don't believe this is a debate we should have surrounding fundraising policy at the schools. And if there is a mandate, if the impacts are understood, there is a place for upholding the sanctity of life within board policies and practices. Students, a lot of them, have asked how this will affect important school traditions and clubs and how Halton families can participate in province-wide fundraising. Nobody has given them an answer. At the February 21st meeting at Christ of the King School Council meeting, I was told it would have no impact on 2018 fundraising activities. That's not true. They've all been put on hold. How is it fair that you are going to put on hold activities that have been planned and approved under an existing fundraising guidelines? That's just not right. And the conclusion. Thankfully, I believe this motion won't be turned into a policy quietly under everyone's radar. I think everyone here is going to ensure that that doesn't happen. There are too many board needs to address the issues that have been raised and the confusion surrounding this. And this motion needs to be revoked until there's proper, appropriate consultation with all the stakeholders. If this consultation doesn't happen, there will be continued upheaval in all the Halton schools and your constituents will continue to demand answers.
Thank you very much. Trustees, it's 10:20. We need to take another... 10:23? We need to take another vote. And just for everyone whose presence is here, to go past 10:30 at a board meeting, we need unanimous vote of the trustees, which means every trustee has to be in favour of it, supporting it. We do not go past 11 o'clock at all. So I need a mover to go past 10:30. Trustee Daniel, seconded by trustee Quinn. Any questions to that? Trustee Quinn?
I'd like to ask a question to our advisor on the board. Are we able to suspend our bylaws to go past 11 o'clock to ensure that all these things are taken care of tonight?
Such a... I believe such a rule can be suspended if required. So trustee Quinn?
So I'd like to move that we continue this meeting indefinitely until we have reached at least... Have completed all the action items this evening. Past 8.5.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I'd like to move that we suspend the bylaws and continue this meeting until we reach... Have completed all the action items at 8.5.
All right, we passed the 10:30, but that is unanimous. Okay, so we'll talk about 11 o'clock when we get to 11 o'clock. Okay, so all in favour? It's a unanimous vote. Student trustees, they're okay if they want to. Jane? We've got one more delegation. A clear vote? Yes, but we're going to split. We're going to split this latest presentation. Yeah, I know, but we just finished the last one. Will you vote in favour? Go past 10:30? All right, I think you've got something to say why you want to go past 10:30. Absolutely, go ahead.
I think it's important that we respect that everyone who came out tonight to, one, make sure we hear all the delegations, and number two, I think they're also expecting some sort of discussion amongst the trustees themselves. Certainly we can use this conversation at future meetings in the publichood, but I think we should go past and respect their vote.
I would like to at least get 8.1. Anyone else who wants to speak to this? No? All right, can we take the vote? Trustee Carapallo? Trustee Ingrid? Trustee Intimacy? Trustee Michael?
I'm in favour of what you said on going to 8.1.
Okay, that's what we're talking right now, 8.1. Well, it's going to 11 o'clock. That's past 10:30, but it would go to 8.4. Okay, so you're in favour of getting complete to 8.1, and that's all? That's as far as you're going? Okay.
Action that's on the table.
Let's have the motion to go past 10:30 and leave it at that. I'm just trying to get this completed. Okay, we've got to go, just go past 10:30. We've got Helena, yes. Ingrid, yes. Arlene, yes. Jane? No. So past 10:30. Yes. Okay. Anthony? Christina? Paul? Anne-Marie? Anthony? Okay. It's unanimous. So we've gone past 10:30, so... Last delegation is 5.19, response to upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and non-profit resolution, Ms Walls. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to meet with me this evening. I know it's been a long night, so I will try and keep this succinct. My name is Lindsay Walls. I am an Oakville Halton Catholic ratepayer. I'm also a parent of a child within the Halton Catholic School Board. My purpose this evening is to urge you to repeal or overturn the sanctity of life motion for the reasons I'll go into shortly. Future motions of similar nature should only be done after appropriate stakeholder consultation, including a vote of Halton Catholic District School Board students, parents and ratepayers be completed prior to trustee approval. Before I go into the rationale, I want to share the background and formulated my thoughts. Motion 6118 passed without any formal parent or ratepayer consultation. The first time I heard of the motion was a full forty-five days after the original motion was tabled and ten days after it was last approved. There was a tonne of communication about everything else on the Halton Catholic District Board website, Twitter accounts, Facebook groups and trustee Twitter feeds, and yet nothing mentioned this motion, and I really question where that was. The only place I could find any information on this motion was by watching the full YouTube videos of the January 16th, February 20th trustee board meetings, where I came to see exactly how this motion was passed. I have to ask, in the age of social media where information can be quickly and easily disseminated, learning about an important motion from a newspaper article is extremely disappointing, to say the least. Second, student consultation was limited and informal at best. While student trustees were asked their opinion, there was no formalised process to solicit greater student feedback. Student trustees had to take it upon themselves to collect student opinion, and after voicing serious student concern, their opinion was largely dismissed. The board has historically discussed divisive matters with constituents prior to passing motions. This year alone, we have been asked to provide input on early French immersion, ward delegations and school budgets. Clearly, there is precedent of trustees soliciting community feedback on important issues. It follows that a similar process of formalised feedback be solicited for motion 6118. My rationale for overturning this motion is as follows. Number one, at no point during the lengthy and clearly sensitive discussion did any trustee suggest that the community be consulted. As trustees, you fail to fairly evaluate how motion 6118 would be perceived by the community with which you are supposed to serve. This can be changed by overturning this motion. Two, passing this motion without first understanding which charities are impacted is both irresponsible and ambiguous. To me, this is like passing a budget without first reviewing the finances. It makes it really hard to understand the motion. I respect that for those upholding this motion, the point is not what charities are impacted, but rather aligning fundraising with Catholic tenets. This may be clear-cut to some, but for others like myself, the good of these charities cannot be ignored. The reaction I've received from many other parents is very different once they understand that the motion almost certainly bans well-respected and world-renowned charities such as sick kids and Canadian Cancer Society. This motion should be overturned and not tabled again until it is at least known which charities are impacted. Three, Halton Catholic District School Board community cast their approval for existing fundraising by the giving of their money. The success of existing fundraising efforts suggests the Catholic community as a whole does not object to existing fundraising efforts. Further, and I think this is really important, no other board has placed similar limits on fundraising. You simply cannot ignore the overwhelming Catholic community support for the charities you have now, as a committee of nine, decided to ban. Four, motion 6118 has sparked debate about the need for public Catholic school education. It also has existing ratepayers and parents seriously questioning their support for Catholic education. My husband and I are one of these such people, and I know that we are not alone in this thinking. It is easy to think that anyone who opposes a divisive motion can just go to the public board, but I want to sit here to remind everyone sitting at this table that the Catholic separate board is a publicly funded board. As such, all members currently supporting this board have equal right to have their opinions heard and their voice fairly represented. If we really want to retain Catholic faith-based education for our children, then we need to reflect the views of all existing and future Catholic school board supporters. Passing motions not in line with Catholic school supporters is bad for enrollment, it hurts funding, and it threatens the future of faith-based publicly funded education. Five, community support has successfully been sought for other issues by surveys and online voting procedures. The systems are already in place to efficiently communicate to stakeholders. There is no reason the same system shouldn't have been implemented here and can and should trustees decide to revisit this motion in the future. In conclusion, I really do respect how important the issue of right to life is to the Catholic faith and the Catholic teachings. I am convinced all the trustees here before me have thought long and hard about this decision and this motion, and do so with the very best of intent and the utmost respect for the Catholic faith. All I ask is that you appreciate the same, the exact same, for those of us who are not in support. I urge you to do what you were mandated to do, what you do for every other important issue you table, and that is consult the Halton Catholic School community of students, ratepayers and parents on the sanctity of life motion. Until the community is fully engaged and able to vote their opinion, motion 6118 can and should be overturned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much to all delegates. What we will be doing is... The delegation, the board's agenda shall include an action item entitled "Board Response to Delegations at the Same Meeting". Trustees in attendance may move and approve a motion for a decision on this matter at this meeting, a referral of the matter to a future meeting, a staff report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting or to receive for information. We will get to that very quickly. Before we do that, I would like trustees to go to item six, Approval of the Minutes. Can I have a mover? Arlene, seconded by Susan. Any questions? Thank you. All in favour? Thank you very much. You will also please take a look, when you have time, the summary of outstanding items, which basically is Policy 1-26. Student trustees on the board. We are now into the action items, 8.1, Response to Delegations. Does any trustee wish to make a motion? Trustee Daniel?
Yes, Chair Abendo, I'd like to make a motion that responds to some of the concerns of the delegations. Nick, if I may?
Yes, could you speak loud?
Hey, read the motion?
A motion? If you wish to speak. Yes, you're going to provide a motion?
I'm making a motion right now.
Okay, go ahead.
I will need a second.
All right, read your motion?
Read the motion first. This motion is entirely making the process of approving charities and nonprofits transparent and accountable to the Catholic ratepayer. Whereas in Resolution 6118 called "Upholding the Sanctity of Life Through Donations to Charities and Nonprofits", that was passed on January 16th, 2018, and again on February 20th, 2018, the HCDSP is taking the principle "Then just stand" to firmly support the Catholic Church's moral teaching that the right to life is paramount for a just and good society. Whereas this principle "Then just stand" was absent from previous administrations. There was a failure to properly vet charities and nonprofits, which may have used donated funds to undermine the respect for human life in the support of activities like abortion, embryonic stem cell research. Whereas the community has been rightly concerned about the impact this resolution has had in possibly stopping legitimate fundraising for charities and nonprofits, which do not directly or indirectly undermine the right to life through their activities in Canada or overseas. Whereas the federal government of Canada, through a recent ideological test of conscience rights, has begun denying funds to any group which believes in the right to life. And whereas the approval or disapproval of any charity or nonprofit in its relationship to Resolution 6118, because it is about promoting and defending the right to life, which is the most fundamental of all human rights, must be handled in a transparent and accountable way so that Catholic ratepayers are well-informed and can participate in the vetting. Therefore, may it resolve that. Number one, the Director of Education will publish a list of approved charities and nonprofits on the HCDSP website as a sign of the school board's commitment to social good and charitable activities by Easter Sunday, April 1st, 2018. Number two, the Director of Education will publish on the HCDSP website in a clear and organised fashion all documents discovered during the research by staff which prove the charity's nonprofit's compliance with Resolution 6118. Number three, the Director of Education will publish on the HCDSP website in a clear and organised fashion all documents discovered by staff in relation to Resolution 6118. in relation to resolution 6118, which may undermine the approval of any approved charities or nonprofits. Number four, the staff doing the research must not simply rely on written statements of a charity's or nonprofit's compliance with resolution 6118 mentioned above, but must make an effort to find, review, and publish on the HCDSP website all materials associated with the charity or nonprofit on their website or any other website which relates to the charities or nonprofit's support for or against the organization's commitment to any funding or public support for abortion with the nation's sterilization, contraception, embryonic stem cell research. Number five, the Director of Education must have an open, public, and transparent process for the public to submit new research which may contradict or support the position of any approved or non-approved charity or nonprofit. Number six, the Director of Education will immediately encourage and encourage all approved charities that are fully supported by the rest of the administration, and in no way shall students or staff be dissuaded from ongoing or new fundraising activities for charities or nonprofits which have been approved. Number seven, after April 1st, 2018, all additional charities and nonprofits will be approved within 60 days of application for approval. Any delay in approval must be due to ongoing investigation of documents, foundry, and research, but must be resolved within 90 days of application for approval. A non-approved organization cannot be fundraised for using the resources of the HCDSP. Number eight, any charity or nonprofit which continues to directly or indirectly support the activities mentioned in resolution 6118 may never, under any circumstances, be entered into a financial relationship with the HCDSP. Number nine, any charity or nonprofit which in the past has directly or indirectly publicly supported the activities mentioned in 6118 but pledges not to do so again must not have done so for at least five years before it is approved. Further, it must prove it has not done so for at least five years before it is approved. Number 10, be it further resolved that the Director of Education will publish on the HCDSP website a list of all charities which the HCDSP has fundraised for in the last three years, 2015, 16, and 17, in honor of the Feast of Saint Joseph the Worker, by May 1st, 2018. B, the amounts raised for each charity by year over the last three years by May 1st, 2018. C, a report on the number and the amounts for any Canada Summer Job subsidies applied for in 2016, 17, and 18 by Easter Sunday, April 1st, 2018. A further item to be reported is the amount received per application from the federal government for 2016, 17, and 18. D, every year starting in 2018, a list of all charities and nonprofits and the total amount raised for each organization honored by June 29th of each year. Do I have a second?
Yes, go ahead. Can you hear me now? Yes.
Okay, through you, I'm finding trustee Danko's motion very confusing, and I didn't think that that's what we were discussing right now. And further, it complicates everything that we've been discussing tonight to the point where, again, our stakeholders are not getting input. And this is ridiculous.
Trustee Danko, you made promise that this is going to happen forever, but come October 22nd, I took it and you did that. Excuse me, we listen politely to each other, I can hear the delegation.
I don't think he listened.
Excuse me?
He cannot.
Please leave if you cannot. I know it's a long night, I appreciate that, but we're going to make progress if we just listen because we all want to go home. So, you cannot promise anything.
Madam Chair, I have my own point of order. That's totally irrelevant to the issue at hand.
Oh, actually, it is. It's not, it's very relevant.
And you can look for a second there.
I am going to look for a second. Have you, do you wish to say anything else, Arlene, to this?
One, I already have a pretty insisting motion that was coming up as an action item next, which will address how we were going to deal with the delegations this evening. And I feel that there was just simply too much trustee Danko's five-minute dissertation to be able to even sit and make any kind of decision on it this evening.
All right, so apparently I can dismiss your motion. That's correct, but it's too lengthy. She's made a point of order, isn't it? I can dismiss the entire motion? Okay, so you're self-dismissed? Let's get this going. Give us what we can do here. Excuse me, I'm still talking over here, then we'll get the bit over to trustee Quin. We can dismiss that motion on what grounds? Because it was a point of order? Go ahead, just speak.
I understand that the member raised the point of order, and that the chair agreed with the point of order, and dismissed the motion.
Sorry?
Directly after the guy, you could do something.
That's what his job is? He is a parliamentarian.
He directed her decision.
No, no, he told me what I could do in terms of parliamentary procedure.
And those are the only options that she had to either...
That resolution went on, that motion went on and on and on. Trustee Intumasi is saying that that motion completely destroys her motion that she's had in there for two weeks now?
Notice of motion, it's now a motion in front of us, an action item for this evening, which was to come immediately after the delegations.
Okay, trustee, personally?
So, if you look at both the motions, they're actually complementary. You could effectively pass both motions.
The motion that, let's be realistic, the motion that trustee Danko has presented is far-reaching and is massive, and quite frankly, I don't think the director could get all of that done by Easter Sunday, which is a week away. That's right, but I've just said that that would be out of order because she's raised a point of motion.
Madam Chair, nothing in this motion is hostile or contradicts the motion brought by trustee Intumasi that's coming up on two. And you...
I'm already ruled on it, move on. Okay, another one. Another motion, trustee Intumasi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Direction on this as well, because my motion is coming up as an action item, but we have not responded to how we are going to respond to the delegations at this point.
That's right, I did indicate that we could make a decision on the presentations, on the delegations at this meeting. We can refer it to other meetings, we can request a staff report on the matter to be reconsidered at a future meeting, or we can receive as information. That's what I indicated immediately after the delegations. I opened up the floor for any trustee motions, and we have this massive motion.
Then I move that we receive the delegations as information.
You're receiving the delegations as information, which, you've got a second there? Now, that means, that means that it doesn't necessarily go further than this. Okay, so just so you understand, okay? It's information, the same way as if you've got a copy of our agenda. We've got information items on the second page, three, and that's just information. It's knowledge that comes into you. It doesn't necessarily mean it's going to result in anything. So that's what's on the floor right now. Questions pertaining to this? Trustee Michael?
Through you, Madam Chair. We're clearly in violation of the Education Act. We are required to do something for the delegations for this.
As has been mentioned, we are in violation of the Education Act Regulation 6112.00. Yes, we are. I know we have to address that, we're going to address that in trustee Intumasi's motion, but it's on the table, it is part of it. We just can't do nothing. We are in violation of the Education Act, trustee Intumasi.
Then I would like to move my motion, but we have tabled as an action item, as a response.
Make a motion, Dave.
No.
Yes, we did.
Which one? All the information, yes, information one. Received the information, I move that in the second, received the information. We have that already, so now, if there are no other comments pertaining to that motion, we have to vote on it. And I explained to everyone what that meant, okay? I know that we're in violation of the Education Act, and that's not a happy place to be. Absolutely, but that is where we're at right now with this particular motion. So if you want to receive this information, you vote on it. It's five votes. If you don't want it to go there, then you vote against it, okay? So are we ready for the vote?
Small discussion.
Yes.
Through you, I didn't hear editing the delegations today that provided any legal advice to us, if we were in any conflict with the Education Act. So I'm happy to receive these as information and continue our discussion on that at any date.
So that, yes. Well, I believe the director sent you out an email which indicated the sections of 612 that we're in violation on. We talked about that last night, and then it went out.
But nothing to do with the delegations, that's why we're...
One delegation didn't mention it, I believe, several, okay. They didn't mention it.
They weren't legal opinions.
We have legal opinions on that. We have our legal opinions.
How did you recite those?
Enough, enough, enough. What's your point of order?
This is not to make the motion of receiving information.
You're right, you're right. Take the vote, trustee Carvallo. In favor of it being information only, okay? Ingrid?
Oppose.
Trustee Intumasi?
Propose.
Trustee Michael?
Propose.
Trustee Tice?
Vice Chair Marais?
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Trustee Christina? Trustee Bro? Trustee Anariam, opposed. Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
And the chair will vote, and I am opposed. Five to four, it has passed for information, okay? Information, and I explained that to you, and we will move on. We're going to move on to trustee Intumasi's. 8.2, Consultation of Cooperation of Resilience, -61-18, trustee Intumasi.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like you to read the motion.
Yes, please, for everyone here.
Whereas, the Education Act in describing the authority of school boards sets up a specific authority to exercise power through policy. Whereas, decisions or resolutions of the board of trustees that require ongoing actions or have a continuous impact on system actions should be documented in policy. Whereas, the Education Act requires school boards to develop and maintain policies that set clear expectations and standards. Whereas, as elected officials, trustees are expected to develop policy in an open and accountable manner, and public consultation on policy development is one important way that trustees serve their communities and ensure accountability to their constituents. Whereas, it is important to consider a particular policy's effect on different groups, and where possible, consult with the major partners before making significant changes to a particular policy. Whereas, Section 19 of Ontario Regulation 612.00, under the Education Act, requires school boards to consult with school councils with respect to policies in guidelines governing fundraising activities of school councils. Whereas, Board Resolution 6118 imposes specific restrictions on school fundraising activities, but no effort was made to consult with school councils, students, or staff with respect to these significant changes. Be it resolved that the Haltin Catholic District School Board charged the policy committee with the mandate to incorporate into policy V04 "School Fundraising Activities: The Requirement Stipulated in Resolution 61/18." Be it further resolved that the policy committee submit policy V04 as amended for stakeholder input in accordance with operating policy 1, Governance of Policy.
Speak through, go ahead.
I'm ready to speak. I think it's almost as long as the motion.
Second there, can we have a second, please, trustee Intumasi? Trustee Michael?
One of the important tasks that trustees engage in is establishing direction through development and monitoring of policy. Good governance dictates that trustees must work in collaboration with the other members of the school board to develop policies that work for all students and ensure they are implemented effectively. Policies set out the expectations about what should happen for how services are to be provided within the school board. A well-written policy describes to parents, the public, and the board's staff what they can expect and demonstrates transparency. From the numerous letters we have received, along with the many delegations here tonight presenting their impassioned views on the topic of the Sanctity of Life, resolution 6118, it is clear that our stakeholders are very entrusted and invested in this recent decision, and hence, want to express their opinion to the board of trustees, something our stakeholders did not have an opportunity to do when the motion was first tabled in January and re-educted in February. Certainly, we have had motions come before the board in the past that became resolutions which have not made their way to a policy. This is not good governance practice. We should not be selective as to when we will or won't seek input. We have heard from many of our students and student trustees, Haltin Catholic students are engaged and committed to helping others by supporting various charitable organizations. I personally have been inspired by our students, their depth of compassion, understanding of Catholic teaching and values, and their dedication to acts of kindness. As Catholics, the overwhelming commitment is unquestionably to protect all life, but my intent here this evening is simply to ensure we adhere to proper protocol and practice in our attempt to do so. Because this resolution is directly linked to school fundraising, Regulation 612.00 requires the board to consult with school councils who in turn will consult with the parents at the respective schools. Had we followed Regulation 612.00, there would have been better clarity at the outset regarding which charities are affected and which are not, thereby preempting undue speculation, stakeholder upset, and the subsequent confusion that is ensued. Due to the ambiguity created by not clarifying the criteria at the outset regarding which charities are eligible and why for parents and stakeholders, a storm of misunderstanding and emotional upset has prevailed, creating misconceptions at school and community levels, and immediate speculation. Most sadly to me, it has pitted good intention against good intention and has given rise to much misinformation. Instead of working together, our Catholic communities are being torn apart for no good reason other than inconsistent process. The only option we now have is to bring this resolution to the policy committee, adjust, update the current school fundraising policy, and perform our due diligence in seeking feedback from school councils on the amended policy. My understanding is there may be an amendment forthcoming to my motion. I would only hope that it does not alter the intent of the motion and that the voices of our parents and stakeholders will not just be heard, but acted upon, on imploring your support for rectifying impaired process. As has been said once before, the only thing we have to fear is fear itself. Let's face it, all the same.
Thank you. All right, trustee Danko?
Chair, I'd like to make an amendment by substitution.
Amendment by substitution? Okay, go ahead.
So, replace trustee Intumasi's...
You have to read it, so we have to read it. So, I guess you're going to have to read what you're taking out?
Yes, so my amendment would substitute the following motion. The first four "whereas's" of trustee Intumasi's motion would be deleted, so 1, 2, 3, 4. The first four "whereas's" would be struck out. So, it begin with, whereas it is important to consider a particular policy's effect on different groups and where policy will consult... on different groups and where possible consult with major partners before making significant changes to a particular policy. Continuing, whereas section nineteen of Ontario Regulation six twelve zero zero under the Education Act requires school boards to, and then replace consult with, with the language of the Act, it says solicit the views of school councils with respect to policies and guidelines governing fundraising activities of school councils. And I add, whereas section twenty-two, which was omitted from the current portion, section twenty-two of Ontario Regulation six twelve zero zero under the Education Act requires school councils to conduct all fundraising activities in accordance with policies established by the board, and the fundraising activities are for purposes approved and authorized by the board. So that's directly from the Education. It continues to strike out, whereas Board Resolution imposes specific restrictions, that is struck out. And it continues, be it resolved at the HCDSP, and then I strike out a charge to policy committee statements with the mandate two. And it continues with the words incorporated into policy V oh four, dash school fundraising activities requirements stipulated in Resolution sixty-one eighteen. It continues, be it further resolved, that the policy committee is struck out, replaced with HCDSP staff, submit policy V oh four as amended for stakeholder input in accordance with operating policy one, governance of policy, comma, added, sending, adding the following text, sending the correspondence to all stakeholders as well as all parents and staff, and that the solicited views be presented in a staff report for discussion at a future board meeting, and, further adding, be it further resolved, that the following text be included in the stakeholder correspondence, whether it's an email, a letter, an email, so point one. Sections ninety-three of the Constitutional Act of Canada, denominational rights, and section one, one point one four of the Education Act of Ontario clearly establish denominational rights, and it is a right of fundamental moral and religious issue that a Catholic school and all its activities do not financially or otherwise support activities which violate the right to life of all human beings. It is clearly the teaching of the Catholic Church that any support, directly or indirectly of abortion, euthanasia, embryonic stem cell research, sterilization, contraception violates the sacredness of human life.
Okay, can I just stop there?
Point two.
Can I just stop there, because it is eleven, and you have got quite a bit more to read? So I need...
One page.
I need a mover to go past eleven. We have to have unanimous support every half an hour. Trustee Quinn?
Save for the motion that's on the floor, if I...
Yes, but it's still point one.
This action will need to be concluded.
Yes, it will be concluded.
Maybe it doesn't die a lot.
I know, no, not, yes, it will have to be concluded, absolutely. I just want to get it past that before you go on, because I'm getting nonseal. Trustee Quinn, are you seconding that? Yes, yes. Who moved it? You moved it, well, okay. So we need unanimous support to go past eleven and for every half hour after this, okay? And then we will, however, finish trustee Danko's motion after this regardless of whether we approve going past eleven or not. So trustee Quinn, you vote?
In favor.
In favor, Adaria?
Oppose.
Trustee Row?
Favor.
Trustee Danko?
Favor.
Vice Chair Murray? I'm sorry, Christina, sorry. Trustee Tries? Trustee Michael? Trustee Intamasi? In favor. Trustee, trustee, Ingrid? Trustee Caravella? It's not unanimous, and we have to be unanimous every half an hour. So we will just finish off.
It's the action amendments.
Yes, yes. So after trustee Danko has finished with this, and we've finished with this particular item, we will have to stop the meeting. Okay, trustee Danko, please.
So, okay, I'm continuing with the text, it should be included in the correspondence. Point two, Diana Nanda, our HCSB chair, the CBC Radio Metro Morning Interview on March fifth, twenty eighteen, stated, this is the motion of the board, the resolution of the board, and whether trustees agree with it or not, it was passed. Therefore, all trustees have to openly support that motion. She further stated, I think it's trying to follow the intents of our faith very strictly, and we do support our Catholic faith, and we do do our very best, but it has caused division, there's absolutely no question about that, she said. Consequently, this passed resolution is being implemented, and the reference to the community for feedback is to listen to concerns with implementation, but will not change or alter the substance of the resolution passed in board meetings of January sixteenth, twenty eighteen, and again on twenty, February twenty eighteen, twentieth of February twenty eighteen. And there's a link there to that story. Point three, the following quotes from key teaching documents of the Catholic Church will also be included in the body of email, correspondence. It is impossible to further the common good without acknowledging and defending the right to life, upon which all the other inalienable rights of individuals are founded and from which they develop. A society lacks solid foundations when, on the one hand, it asserts values such as the dignity of the person, justice, and peace, but then, on the other hand, radically acts to be contrary by allowing and tolerating the varieties in which human life is devalued and violated, especially whereas we are marginalized. Only respect for life can be the foundation and guarantee of the most precious and essential goods of society, such as democracy and peace. This is Pope Saint John II, Evangelium Vitae, nineteen ninety-five. Further quoting, no public official, especially one claiming to be a faithful and serious Catholic, can responsibly advocate for or actively support direct attacks on innocent human life. No appeal to policy procedure, majority will, or pluralism ever excuses a public official from defending life to the greatest extents possible. As is true of leaders in all walks of life, no political leader can evade accountability for his or her exercise of power. Those who justify their inaction, this is from the Evangelium Vitae, seventy-three, dash four, seven pages, seventy-three, seventy-four. Those who justify their inaction on the grounds that abortion is the law of the land need to recognize that there is a higher law, the law of God. No human law can bound and contradict the command that thou shalt not kill. This is from the United States Conference of Catholic bishops, living the gospel of life, a challenge to you Catholics. Furthermore, whatever is opposed to life itself, such as any type of murder, genocide, abortion, euthanasia, or willful self-destruction, whatever violates the integrity of the human person, such as mutilation, torments, infliction of body or mind, attempts to coerce the will itself, whatever insults human dignity, such as subhuman living conditions, arbitrary imprisonment, deportation, slavery, prostitution, the selling of women and children, as well as disgraceful working conditions where men are treated as mere tools for profit rather than as free and responsible persons. All these things and others of their like are indicative indeed. They poison human society, but they do more than those, they do more harm to those who practice them than those who suffer them, suffer from the injury. Moreover, they are a supreme dishonor to the Creator. The pastoral constitution of the Church in the modern world, God of its best, is the Vatican two. For God, the Lord of life, has conferred on man the surpassing ministry of safeguarding life in a manner which is worthy of man. Therefore, from the moment of its conception, life must be guarded with the greatest care while abortion and infanticide are unspeakable crimes. And this is from the pastoral constitution of the Church in the modern world, God of its best, in section fifty-one. Quotes from the catechism of the Catholic Church, two-two-seven-one, since the first century, the Church has affirmed the moral legal of every period of abortion. This teaching has not changed or remains unchanged.
Are we finished? Can I have a point of order? Yes.
I'm reading the text, but I...
I've already said point of order twice. Point one, I'm reading over talk. Go ahead. Why is this germane, and the other motions were not germane? We're talking about working men now, I don't even know. It seems to be...
This information will be included in the correspondence, that goes to the stakeholders.
Are you telling, but this is not part of your amendment?
Yes, it is. It's the text to be included.
The entire amendment, this is the whole amendment?
There's one more, there's four more paragraphs, and one further be resolved. You have this, I have.
No, I don't have chance anymore. Carry on, carry on, carry on.
I'm just reading it into the record.
Read it into the record, go ahead.
Twenty-two seventy-two, from Operation of Abortion Constitutes a Grave Offense. The Church attaches the canonical penalty of excommunication to this crime against a woman. A person who procures a completed abortion incurs excommunication that day essentially by the very commission of the offense, and what's subject to the conditions provided by canon law. The Church does not therefore intend to restrict the scope of mercy, rather she makes clear the gravity of the crime committed, irreparable harm done to the innocent who is put to death as well as to the parents of the whole society. Twenty-two seventy-three, inalienable right to life of every innocent human individual is a consequence to the development of the civil society and its legislation. Twenty-two seventy-four, since it must be treated from conception as a person, the embryo must be defended in its integrity, character, and field as far as possible like any other one. Twenty-two seventy-seven, wherever its motives and means, the record of euthanasia consistently will be added to the lives of the handicapped, sicked and dying persons is morally unacceptable. Twenty-two, twenty-three, ninety-nine, regulation of birth represents some of the aspects of responsible fatherhood, and legitimate intentions on the part of the spouses do not justify recourse to morally unacceptable things, for example, through sterilization or conscious abortion. Text is up. Be it further resolved, that if challenged lawyers representing the HCSB will be directed to rely on section ninety-three of the Constitution Act of Canada, denominational rights, and section one, one point four of the Education Act of Ontario.
I would think that the lawyers will rely on their own legal judgment. You can't direct them. You're directing what you want our lawyers to look at, no?
This is a denominational rights issue, Chair.
And you know very well who funds this board, and it's the province of Ontario.
Site of legislation of Canada, Ontario.
Excuse me, trustee Quinn?
Thank you, three members, Chair.
You're seconding the amendment?
No, I think we have seconded it before.
No, no, trustee Danko? You're seconding?
I had a question.
Question, go ahead. He says that he is reading the text from record. No, that he's reading the text so it's in the record, as long as it was. Yes, yes, go right ahead, absolutely. Trustee Quinn, you had a question? You got a mover on an amendment?
I had a question. Can we discuss it?
We have, will you second it first? A second, you're seconding now. Okay, trustee Caravella, seconding, go ahead.
Thank you, three members, Chair. Could trustee Danko give us the ten-second version of how this amendment to trustee Intamasi's motion will be included in future policies?
Go ahead, ten seconds, I mean it.
This, this motion, it respects trustee Intamasi's motion to satisfy the regulatory requirements of six twelve zero zero by incorporating the resolution of sanctity of life into the existing charity's policy, and sending it out for consultation. But it also recognized the fact that there is a section twenty-two of the regulation that gives the board the right to establish fundraising policies.
Okay, all right, so he is seconding, we've got seconded, trustee Caravella, trustee Ingrid, you have a question? I'm sorry? Yes, absolutely.
So first of all, I would just like to say that it seems that everyone around the table has this, from me, Christina, and Anna, the motion in front of them, it kind of makes... No, I just, I would like to point out that it makes us feel marginalized when things go out to everyone but us. We treat as equal members of the board only a meeting ago. But onwards from that, I would just like to say that, in my point of view, when we send out information to the stakeholders, we're looking for their genuine perspectives on this motion, I think we can leave them to make up their mind by themselves. And I think that just, this is the motion, what are your thoughts on it, is enough, we don't need to add anything else to just getting their stakeholder to put, that's all we're looking for.
Thank you, trustee Ingrid. And with regard to the package that trustee Danko had, it just came out this evening, it was put on the table, so as June and I are sharing a copy here, so there was no slide, we did not go out ahead of time, it was just placed on the tables tonight. So, all right, so we've got a mover, we've got a seconded question?
Yes, three members, Chair, to redone the overhaul. Is this policy, the oh four school fundraising activities coming up for review anytime according to our schedule?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is, right now, it's not on the docket to be reviewed, it's in the next little overhaul of the, obviously, the schedule can be adjusted.
So we can adjust the schedule, okay. Anyone else want to say anything else before we take a vote on the amendment? Trustee Intamasi?
I'm not in favor of trustee Danko's amendments. I think they're too lengthy, I think it confuses the issue. My intention was simply to keep it simple, to get our stakeholder feedback, look at it realistically, listen to what we're being told, and make any kind of a decision after that. I think, to me, it's too lengthy for everybody having a coffee to give and make a decision.
Through Madam Chair, the Board of Trustees do have the duty and the power to set the standards and expectations through its governance authority by developing, implementing, and monitoring policy. The expectations that were expressed in Resolution sixty-one eighteen, known as the sanctity of life, outline the requirements that our schools must adhere to if they are considering raising funds for charities or nonprofits. The trustees do have the authority to set that standard. But because this resolution involves school fundraising, Regulation six twelve zero zero requires that the board does consult with school councils, and at this point, we're not in compliance with the regulation as we have not sought the feedback from our school councils. It's not about the content, it's about the process. I do have a dual responsibility here. I report to the Board of Trustees as their employee, and I also have a responsibility to ensure that what we do in our district is compliant with the Education Act, with the regulations, and the statutory requirements set out by the Ministry of Education. It's my duty to offer my best advice. My advice would be to incorporate the resolution language into the policy, into our existing school fundraising policy, and send that amended policy out for stakeholder consultation, including all stakeholders that are school councils. They would, we would then review the feedback, and if necessary, make any adjustments to the policy. I strongly recommend you take this advice, because it would be an error of mission by this board if we did not, and I have a duty to report errors of mission to the ministry. So I'll leave that to Madam Chair.
I would like to see the policy go out to the parents, guardians, stakeholders, and it to be simple, not to be couched in so much jargon and so much rhetoric that they just say, I'm busy, I'm tired, I just got home from work, the kids need to be fed and bathed, and I don't have time or the energy to go through all of this. Just give them the policy, saying, what do you think, and that's it. And I think that was raised earlier on, maybe trustee Intamasi, that was your comment. It's just getting very verbose. Trustee Quinn, you had a point?
Through you, to trustee Danko, as I read your amendment to trustee Intamasi's motion, I believe that you, this motion follows the advice of the current notification. Do you concur with that? Trustee Danko?
All right, trustee Danko, your question?
Yes, I agree.
All right, okay, so we've got it on the table, we've got the mover and the seconded, so now we have to take the vote.
Madam Chair.
Another one, yes?
Through Madam Chair, I'm wondering if trustee Danko will consider removing point two, referencing the chair herself, or quotes in Metro Morning, I think that is fortuitous and is poor for us, without that, without that part.
I referred him to my CVC interview, I'm using it. Make an amendment to the amendment, please.
Hi, Madam Chair. Chair, would I now inter moving point?
Yes, thank you. That's seconded on the amendment to the amendment. And you just have to go on the amendment to the amendment. All, thank you very much. Any questions to that? All in favor of that? It's removing the section with my name referring to the CVC interview. That, that time? Okay, so that passes. So now we go back to your large amendment. So now we go back to your large amendment, which is piggybacking on our needs, right?
Well, it's actually considered minus...
It's a substitution. All right, so we've got a move up and a second on that. Trustee Danko and trustee Caravella, again, to our stakeholders, that is, five votes for pass that. So we're going to take the vote on that, you ready? On the amendment, on the amendment that froze, that you provided, the amendment.
By substitution.
Substitution. Trustee Caravella? Trustee Ingrid? Posed. Trustee Intomasi? Trustee Michael? Trustee Trites? Trustee Vice Chairman? Trustee Danko?
Favor.
Trustee Christina? Trustee Rob? Trustee Anna Maria? Trustee Quinn? And I'm opposed. Five, four. The amendment passes, and now we go back to the main motion. As amended, as amended. Same wording. Okay, so we've got a move up, move up on it, so we've got a second. Trustee Quinn? You know what you did that means, so we have to take vote in the end? Discussion. Discussion. Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the director. As we send this out to all stakeholders, could we highlight trustee Danko's references to a number of documents, including the entire documents in those links, so that not only do we have these specific references, but also the entire documents linked?
Through you, Madam Chair, I haven't even seen the amendment, but I'll...
They're all bad, they're all bad.
Okay, so we're ready to take the vote on that? Trustee Christina? Yes, sir.
So I'd just like to begin by expressing my gratitude to our student delegates who are brave and shone as they respectfully expressed their opinions on behalf of this to these student trustees. We cannot be more proud of you guys. Our students are shone Catholic leaders, and their voices and advocacy clearly is shown that we have taught them to be the positive leaders that are able to speak to their values, are able to speak to the morals, and the principles, and most importantly. I urge my fellow trustees to actually listen to what your students are saying. Consult them. Allow democracy to prevail. They have come to you, they have sat through a meeting, it's 11:21 on a Tuesday school night. They obviously want to be heard. Consult them, what do you have to lose? You're here representing them, so you need to take what they're saying into serious consideration. Okay, I too like to commend the brave, outspoken students that have delegated tonight throughout this entire process, and have taken the initiative to speak their minds on this issue. It is so heartening to see that students that so strongly advocate for the future of this board and wish to see that many students that come to our board after us have the same opportunities that they have had to do good. And as Ben said, we are the youth, we the youth are the voices of tomorrow, and we the students will not let our voices go unheard. It is my duty to be an advocate for the voice of the students to the best of my ability, and despite my vote not being binding, I can tell that I don't think that our students are being consulted properly, and that their voices aren't being heard. I think that we're trying to push a certain viewpoint forward, and I don't think that we're trying to listen to what our students are saying, and listening to the suggestions and the comments that they have made. And I urge that we reconsider what we're doing and how we're sending out the stakeholder information to better reflect what our students have been trying to tell us all night, and to better reflect a neutral standpoint where we're just trying to receive stakeholder input as I have said when I responded on the other side. Thank you.
So now we are ready for the vote. Trustee Caravella?
Can I make some statements as well?
Are they going to be brief?
More or less.
Yes, that's good, because...
I just wanted to...
Please wait for you.
Thank you, I just wanted to address also all the delegations that came for your effort to express your views and teachings of the Church. Pope Francis was quoted a lot, and I have another quote for him that I'd like to share with you. He spoke to the Italian Catholic Physicians Association in 2014, saying, "The predominant school of thought sometimes leads to false compassion, which holds that it is a benefit to women to promote abortion, an act of dignity to perform euthanasia, a scientific breakthrough to produce a child, considered as a right rather than a gift to be welcomed, or to use human lives as laboratory animals allegedly in order to save lives." In this quote, Pope Francis specifically circles out that not just abortion and euthanasia is being wrong, but to be opposed.
Trustee Caravella, we can't, I thought you were going to give a few comments. We cannot, we cannot do another presentation.
I just want you to know, too, that according to Halton Live, there are 1,700 abortions in...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to say, that's a point. I'm sorry, I'm gonna say out of order, because you're doing another presentation. On behalf of the board, all of the board, I'd like to thank the delegates. I am especially proud of our students from our council section. On behalf of that group, we would like to thank you most sincerely. We still have this thing on the floor, and so, yes. Yes, I know, we're not, but right now, we just go, I voted there. Trustee Caravella, your vote, please. In favor? Ingrid? Trustee Intomasi? Trustee Michael? Trustee Trites? Trustee Vice Chairman? Trustee Danko? Trustee Christina? Trustee Rob? Trustee Anna Maria? Trustee Quinn? And I'm opposed. It passes again, five, four. This seems to be a pattern with nine trustees, I guess, so it's always been that close. So on behalf of everyone, thank you so much for being here this evening. You've been amazing, and we really appreciate the delegations and the tremendous work. Thank you. Are we ready to cut the closing prayer? Chair on the meeting, trustee Danko, seconded by. Trustee Trites, all in favor? Thank you. Vice Chair Murray, please. Hail Mary, please. Mother, Son, Holy Spirit, Amen. Hail Mary, for the greater good of the world, to be blessed by the hearts of the faithful, and to be blessed with the goodness of the Father, and the Spirit, and the Holy Spirit. Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you to our crew who's coming in very late. I'm sorry to put everything away for us, thank you.